Good evening, everyone. Today, May 21st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., I call for order. Please join me for the pleasure allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, clerk, Rockhold.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Here, Treasure Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee N'Amothu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And trustee Tedros Adesin, this evening we have a quorum.
I would like to amend the agenda. I would like to remove item eight. Any support for that?
Yes, I will second.
L eight.
Yes, to remove L eight.
Okay, all right.
Any other changes?
No, that's all we got. Others in favor?
No.
Hold on, hold on. I'd like to remove item L four.
L four?
Until after it could be discussed in a closed session.
L four. Okay. In closed session.
Anything else?
Well, did somebody support it?
No, nobody supported.
I supported.
No, she supported number eight.
Removing, we'll put them together.
Is that on the consent or regular?
They're both on regular.
Yeah.
Can we discuss that, or we have support on that?
I don't, just.
I supported the motion to remove them. We haven't voted yet.
To remove number four?
No, number eight, number eight.
And number four.
I would like to have a discussion on number four prior to the removal of it, since everybody's here. Is that possible to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I guess I would ask, let's start with Ron, why he wants it off the agenda, and then we can maybe discuss.
I don't necessarily want to remove it totally. What I want is, since it's talking about the purchase of property and expenditure of money, I think it should be discussed in closed session before we bring it to a vote. So if we want to delay it and have a closed session, then come back, or put it on the next meeting, or whatever you want. But to me, we need to have, needs to be discussed and expounded on as far as, I guess, pros and cons on, you know, on this step in general, so.
Okay, I think that, and I don't know if Dan, you can chime in if that, we, you know, this is a very unique situation for the township. The DDA is asking for a purchase of it. And I know that typically we would do a closed session on land purchase, but this has now become public. And I want to know if it was something that we could discuss in public. The person that's selling the properties here, the chairman of the DDA is here, the people that, you know, put this together are here. I think, I would like to at least move forward with a discussion on it so that that advances the cause. And I don't feel comfortable being the person only in the closed session making the points to the board when the people who helped put this whole package together for the DDA are here, present in the room, and could talk to it firsthand, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, first of all, the purchase of property is a specific exclusion to an open meeting. And so the law recognizes that to go into closed session for the purchase of property is appropriate up to the time that you enter into a PA. So there's nothing inappropriate about that.
Correct.
Most of the time, that's what you do. You talk about what will be your offer, what are the, what are the different issues, and in fact, what are the terms of the condition. But in terms of the agenda tonight, obviously, that's going to be a decision by the six board members tonight, whether it stays on the agenda or not. And putting it in closed session down the road is fine. Now, the way I understand the structure of the deal, the DDA is important. They're recommending that the township go forward with the structure that's been put forward, but it's really a purchase by the township of the property. So the DDA is not purchasing the property, as I understand it. The township is purchasing it and then leasing it back to the DDA for a period of time to recoup their investment. So it really is up to the board.
Right.
And I understand that there's been a recommendation from the DDA to do that, and the board obviously will give that the appropriate weight it should receive.
I just think it's a unique situation because we're asking the board to loan us the money to buy the property.
Not really, though.
Well, not, okay, they're going to, we're asking them to buy the property, but the DDA is the body that's going to refund the township for the original purchase price using TIF money from the, from the DDA.
Yes, 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 right, right, yeah.
Would it be appropriate to move it to closed session this evening?
The board can always go to closed session if they wish.
Yeah, so what Sam is saying, we have the president of the DDA, we have some members of the DDA, and so other people that would like to speak and all that, and that, so.
Still putting the cart before the horse.
Right, hold on.
The part needs to be discussed.
I understand that. So if we, maybe we can put it, the, okay, Carrie, what you?
You can finish.
Can we do that closed session maybe first in the agenda? We can move it first, so we don't let the people wait for a long time?
Yes, you, the board can go into closed session at any time.
Okay, Paul.
For an appropriate reason, which this is.
That was what I was going to say, so make a motion to add to the agenda to go into closed session prior to
Yeah.
regular, L, regular business.
Yeah, we can do that, Ron. That way, you know, people can't wait too long and.
That's fine, as long as we go into closed session before we start discussion.
Okay, all right, Paul.
I certainly understand, Ron, where you're coming from. The cat's out of the bag already, though. Normally, the idea of going to a closed session is to keep it private so that, you know, effectively, the township doesn't have anybody that knows what's going on, and we have privacy to it until we can take action. Well, it's already been in a public meeting with the DDA. It's been on our agenda for four days, so I don't, I mean, I guess I don't know what we would talk about in a closed session because there's a bunch of already there. I would be okay either way at this point because, like I said, the cat's out of the bag already on it.
Even if we don't take action, I think that the, the board would be best suited to be able to get their presentation as presented tonight from the people that are here and all of the experts and Dick who drafted in you, then we would be able to ever get that in a closed session without inviting a bunch of people. So even if we don't take action, I think the process, I think the process, our plan, what the DDA has been working on. Now, we could do it all during, you know, public comment if we take it off the agenda, and then everyone can kind of give bits and pieces, but I think a co, a little more cohesive presentation and discussion, I would be in favor of. And then the board decides whether they want to take action or go into, you know, go in closed section at the next meeting, or have you answer a bunch of questions prior to next meeting. That would be my, my personal suggestion.
Okay.
All right, I think if we are going to go into closed session, you should authorize Mr. Carlyle to go in with us. From the motion.
Quick question, because this is unique. At one point, would it have needed a public hearing instead of just a presentation on this?
No.
No?
No. I mean, we're not at the point of a PA. The purchase agreement would come back to the board regardless. But that's what we will talk about apparently in closed session, if that's what the board's wishes.
Carrie, can you make a motion to amend, to remove item A, and then go to closed session for round petition? But have to be moved first. Do you write now? Going to remove item A, and other one that Ron asked for, we're going to move it for a closed session, but in the beginning of the meeting.
Well, I don't, do we?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Ron, do you still want to go into closed session prior to the meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Then I would have one more amendment for regular business, ten, to finish our conversation on the Independence Times newspaper discussion that we had last time. As item, it wouldn't be ten, it would be added as item ten to have a discussion on that. Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to remove from regular business L number eight, to add to regular business L number nine, Township Times discussion, and to go into closed session prior to regular business.
Second.
To discuss legal opinion, I'm sorry.
That'd be nine, or would it be ten?
It'll be nine bec-.
Because you're removing one?
Oh, yeah, you're re-.
Yeah.
Yes, because we're removing one, so it makes it nine.
Yeah, so we remove.
So we have a first and a second.
Yeah, a first and, yeah. Okay, so we moving the, which one?
We're just removing.
Eight, remove.
Yeah, that's it. And then Township Times is going to be added here.
Right, Township Times, ten, yeah.
It'll be actually number nine.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so we just need to go.
Okay.
Can you add to the closed session to discuss legal opinion and the purchase of property?
Oh, I did say legal opinion, okay. I'd like to amend my motion to include discussion of legal opinion.
And Dick Carlyle.
To discuss purchase of property, and to include Richard Carlyle, Township Planner, to, to join in the meeting.
Second.
Okay, others in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, board public comments. I have few here. First of all, I want to recognize and congratulate Independence TV. They got one with a, actually, really nice award here. They, so the television has won from the Alliance of Community Media from their 2024 Hometown Media Awards. Independence Television, a community media TV station, is serving for residents of Independence Township, Springfield, and the city village of Clarkston. And that will be recognized as one of the best, the best, community media station across the country at the Hometown Media Awards in San Jose, California on June 26th. Congratulations for them, for the great job. That's great for our community, and we are very proud of them. Congratulations again for them. Then, also, I want to thank everybody in the community, everybody for their support during the difficult time with my wife. She got much, much better, got a good support, thanks for the cards, presents. We spent our first Mother's Day, and that was very nice for a lot of, for the kindness of the community. I'm really grateful for all the support, difficult time for us. Also, I want to thank our director for DPW, Dave McKee. During last weekend, I got a phone call from people, you know, some people go sometimes out to Florida and then coming back, and they have a problem turning their water on. I called Dave McKee during the weekend, and he ran away to take care of these residents. And she actually texted me today and thanks, thanks Dave McKee and the whole DPW crew for helping with that. Also, kudos for the people in the front counter for Wigny. A lot of people, a couple, I got a phone call and a message in. We have a great customer service when people come in, we have good people. I want to congratulate that because usually when I got that email, sometimes, sometimes people complain or bring to my attention something, but now lately, I getting a lot of kudos to our employees, and I want to thank them as well. Lastly, let me see what orders I have here. Well, since we are in the political season, and I see a lot of good people coming here and announcing, running for office, I want to also let everybody know them, and I can use a public comments, I believe, it's board comments, and I'm running for reelection, and I want to let everybody know I, I, what, yes, Paul?
Excuse me?
Can the board talk about politics from the board?
Yeah, it's not a good idea.
No, okay, okay, all right, I won't, I'm sorry, I see in the past, somebody did that, and it was fine. All right, other than that, anyone else?
I do.
Yes, Sam.
I'd like to congratulate Carrie Clerk Newback for her achieving her Level Three Michigan certification through the Professional Municipal Clerk Certification Level Three, which is a big deal. And also, I found out she was keeping it a secret that she also got certified in citizen planning from Michigan State Extension, which is very good news. So I just want to commend her for that. I think it's important that elected officials learn a little bit about what they're doing, and she's obviously taken those steps, so.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, anyone else, Carrie?
I have a couple. AV applications will be mailed out this Thursday to all those on our permanent absentee list. And my office is planning to mail out the bulk absentee ballots, the first mailing. I know that candidates will all be interested in this. What I'm targeting, don't hold me to it, it all depends on, we get the ballots from the printer, targeting to mail these out on Tuesday, June 25th, in the afternoon. So typically, the post office works really great with us in partnership, and residents should probably expect them within a day or so. And lastly, I wanted to let the residents know that there's a septic replacement loan program that's created in partnership with Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy, which is Eagle, which is providing low-interest financing to Michigan homeowners for the replacement of failing or near-failing septic systems. Homeowners can access a two-tier loan, two loan tiers, excuse me, by working with Michigan Saved, which is an authorized septic installation dealer. We'll have more information about this on our website. You can also call the Department of Public Works at 248-625-8222 for more information. But there is, income qualified loan is tier one, and then there's a second tier for market-based loans. So this would be, sounds like would be a great opportunity for our residents that may have some failing septic systems. So we will again have this on the website and contact DPW for more information. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Terry?
I have one I wanted to reiterate because there's been talk and people are confused. I do believe that we are not having a Memorial Day parade due to road closures and things like that. So I know there's been chatter on both, and just to confirm, we are not having one. And Carrie, I'm going to ask you a question because you brought up the absentee ballots. There's some information floating around, and I want you to clarify our early voting because in the state, towns can choose up to 29 days ahead of time to have early voting. We are not doing the 29 days.
Correct.
So if you can, please let them know the dates for sure.
I have to look on my phone. But Oakland County participates within nine days of early voting. And so that would start the Sunday, I don't have the date, you caught me off guard. That would start the Sunday prior to the election, so that would be the 20, July 27th, for nine days, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, that's correct. So it starts on Sunday, the 27th. So early voting takes place for Independence Township residents as well as the city of the village of Clarkston at Brady Lodge at our Bay Court Park, as well as at the Waterford Oaks Activity Center. Our residents can also vote there. This is the same situation as when you vote on Election Day at your precinct. It's the same setup for those of you that may not have taken advantage of that for the presidential primary, and it will be available again in November. Thank you, Terry.
Thanks.
27th is, I looked in the calendars, is a Saturday.
Oh, I thought that was a Sunday.
Just, when I heard you say Sunday, that's why I just want to make sure.
I'm going to put the correct date in Township Times, and we'll have it on our website as well. And I'll announce it again next meeting. We've got some time, but it won't, it won't be until the Sunday, nine days prior to the election, not the 29 days.
Thank you, good. Okay, I think, all right, moving on. Public comments. Any individual that would like to address to the board? Oh, we have Matt Marco. Oh, all right.
Roger Belcher, Lot 126 Deer Hill Drive. Don Tillman is a well-respected businessman. Resident for 22 years, part-time employee of the parks for the past six years. Never missing a shift. Whenever called upon, he has always answered. Example, during COVID, Mr. Tillman was the one who opened the parks. Mr. Tillman is running for Township Supervisor, that's legit. He's not doing this to take votes from anyone. I would ask, how many doors have you knocked on? This board continues to raise salaries for part-time seasonal employees based on the fact that you can't get anyone to work. But tonight, you will cast a vote to remove Mr. Tillman from his post at the parks. This is not based on some ridiculous bylaw that two of you have come up with, but rather a personal vendetta by the same two people. You know who you are, and shame on you both. I'm asking the remainder of the board, let common sense prevail tonight. The other two, they're not capable.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Matt Marco, President of the North Oakland Republican Club NORC, and I'm here particularly to give support to our incumbent Republicans running for reelection. And particularly, we have.
Matt, can you state your address, please?
Oh. My address is 1222 Forest Bay Drive, Waterford.
Thank you.
Anyway, particularly, we have somebody who is an example of one of the things that really makes this country great, and that is that we can attract the best and the brightest to come here from around the world. And that's Jose Aliaga is an example of that. And I'd like to say that Republicans, we don't really care about that. We're individualists. We don't care about ethnicity and race and country of origin. But the thing is, the government does, and the media does, and they're always pushing this whole DEI thing. And it shows that it's a farce because here we have a unique situation where we have an elected Hispanic immigrant, and the press in this country ignores it because he's a Republican. So it shows that the DEI thing's a farce because if you're a Republican, it doesn't matter. But one thing that it does matter to is that Independence Township is becoming world famous because of Jose Aliaga. The press around the world have taken note of it. Supervisor Aliaga is continuously being called for comment from the Latin, the Spanish-speaking press from around the world. And when things are going on in this country, they have interviews with Supervisor Aliaga. And because of that, Independence Township is becoming world famous. And there's a great opportunity because of that, if you want to take advantage of it, to continue to market itself as you're becoming known around the world as Independence Township. So I think that it's a very interesting thing, what's going on. And because the press ignores it in this country, you don't know about it, but this is going on. And in final, I would like to invite everybody to a public meeting we're having about the economy on Thursday night at 7:00 at Deer Lake Athletic Club. Everybody is welcome. It's, we've got some really top-notch speakers that you'll want to hear. 7:00, Deer Lake Athletic Club on Thursday.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Anyone else that would like to address to the board? Please state your name and address. Good evening, Joette.
Hi, Joette Coons, 974 O'Reice Road. I just want to, to, a big shout out to Dave McKee and Alex Senabaugh, the eighth-grade history teacher at Clarkston Junior High, and his 50 kids, who came out today while they washed graves sites and things like that. They also did new videos on QR cards. So we hope that maybe you'll go out to the cemetery. If you go to the left as you go in, that's a historical part. They redid last year's kids. They, they did videos of part of the 52 Civil War Union veterans that are in the cemetery. And it's, it's quite amazing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you, Joette. Anyone else that would like to address to the board?
Tracy Flood, 10470 Country Junction, Clarkston, Michigan. And I'm just here to say that I'm a long-term Independence resident, and that I appreciate independence for what we have here. And everybody's turned on the news, and they're appalled by what they see throughout the nation and our local communities, appalled by what's going on, and sad to other townships around us. So I appreciate what your board does, what the people at the parks do, and I don't know about that situation, which just doesn't sound good. But we, and I know you deal with the community, and a lot of times, the community is not easy on you. But I appreciate all that you do for the Independence Township. Been here for 50 years approximately, so I've spent my time here. And it's good to come home to a place where I feel safe with my family and everything. And I want you to keep driving to improve our township, and keep that in account as you do things, as you vote on things. How do we better and get along with each other to grow our township into a better place? And again, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else?
Hello, Eric Klein, 6486 East Lawn Avenue. I just want to start by saying thank you to the board. I know that Sheriff Bouchard was out last week, and I thought that was really good for the community, for him to discuss the kind of things he was talking about with the Chileans and the kind of the rash of break-ins that had been happening. So I think it's real important that the community see that kind of thing. Also, it's kind of looking forward, looking back to a few meetings past, I want to also thank Jose, because I know he did a lot of work with, I see you took it off the agenda today, but with the flock cameras. I know Sheriff Bouchard thought that was a really good idea as well. And I just want to thank everybody. I think that's great for the community and for us to be proactive and looking at, okay, how can we stop this before it happens? So great job, everybody, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
David Hayward, 6764 Berwick Drive. I serve on the Independence Township Video Board, and I also would like to just point out the hard work that John Elke and Matt Blue do over at the television studio and the things that they do with the community. Last year, they started a camp, video camp. Last year, they started a camp, um, video camp, which is a phenomenal thing, and they're really getting the township engaged in what they're doing, and really bringing a lot of people in the township together, and, um, I do have the pleasure of sitting on that board, and, uh, John has been, he's done a wonderful job, and I, he was here earlier, I don't know if he left or not, or he's back there, but anyway, uh, again, I just wanted to point that out and, uh, thank both those guys for all the hard work they do, uh, to keep that together. John is on the cutting edge of all the new technology that's coming out and, uh, trying to really make us relevant, and I just think he does a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on. Uh, anyone online that would like to? No? Okay. We don't have public hearing, we don't have presentation of report, and then we're going to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling out the check run for discussion.
Which? Check run.
Number two.
Number two.
We don't move to approve it until it's been read.
Right.
So, I don't know if we want to hold before we second, to let him read the consent agenda.
Yeah, I have to read that consent agenda. Oh, okay.
Yeah. I thought we did it the other way, but that's fine. I don't remember.
Let me, uh, we can...
It's fine.
You're right. You're right. You're right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Request to approve the board of trustees special meeting minutes of May 7, 2024, of the regular meetings, minutes of May 7, 2024. Request to approve the May 14, 2024 check run, including the ACH of $2,291,027.84, and ratify the April 26, 2024, and May 10, 2024 payroll of $314,247.82, and the $333,351.99 in the February and March 2024 EFT AC wire activity, $563,044.34, and the $5,831,899.70. Request to approve that 2024 budget amendment 15, CDVG cleanup from 2023, regaguer budget and operation analyst. And number four, request to approve Independence Fest Fireworks Display Permit 2024, Adam Klein. And then, um, next we have request to approve very, very large rental alcohol, Sunday, June 22, 2024, and also for, for six, July 20, 2024, for seven, July 14, 2024, for eight, June 29, 2024, and nine, request to ratify the application signature and submit the RCOC 2024, 2026 permit application. Okay? So send us for remove number two.
I'll make, for, I'll approve the consent agenda with the amendment of the removal of number two. Support.
Okay. Although, uh, okay, so, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Others in favor?
We need a second.
Oh, second?
Support.
Okay. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So...
So now we're at item K.
Item K, okay.
Well, we're moved to item K, right? Items removed from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I just, this is something that I've been talking about for a while.
Sure.
I brought it up last fall about the attorney bills, um, being, you know, that were projected to go over budget again this year. Uh, we went over budget quite a bit last year for some, for the legal prosecution, not legal prosecution and, um, ordinance. Um, so I do want to bring that to the board's attention. I've been tracking it every month. I think we're gonna, we better be watching that, because I think we're gonna go over again this year. We also, uh, last December, we had a discussion about the, uh, the other attorney fees for, um, for one of our other firms that, that was, uh, had been all the way since August that hadn't been paid, um, and I see that that got, uh, rectified in January, uh, which we paid our legal bills for January that went all the way back to July, that we were delinquent. Um, I don't approve them, I don't know how it works, but what I do know is that as a business owner, um, you should get paid for the work you're doing. Now, I've went through, um, because, to see, and we haven't paid, um, other than the bills from last July through last December that we paid in January, um, we've only made one payment, um, on the labor end of it, and, um, uh, and now it's May, so I, I would like an explanation of why we're not paying our bills when they come in. I, I don't think it's professional. Uh, I get people, uh, to work for my company, because, uh, we live up to our obligations and our contracts, and the people that don't, don't get the good people, because there's nothing, um, worse than having to chase money that you earned. So, um, I just, this keeps going on, and I don't see it getting fixed, so if somebody, if you would explain it to me, why we're not paying our bills when they come in, especially the legal, um, I would, I would appreciate it.
Legal, you're talking about labor.
Labor.
Labor, especially labor. Sunday, Saturday, I, I set a meeting with you and, uh, and Peter Keen and, uh, two weeks ago, and you guys talked about that.
That was prosecution.
Justice Kelly.
Oh, excuse me, legal, yeah, no, uh, labor, but I, every time you ask me a question, I always make sure you understand everything. About labor, I think we, we got those, uh, I think we got all those, uh, those bills recently, right? I think, just, it's in the system, all right? So it's gonna be paid some, yeah. So...
What I'm seeing, though, is that every other attorney that we pay for all the other things, they send a bill in, and then we pay them, uh, after the allotted, the specific time, and I don't want to, you know, what are, why are we holding back? Why are we paying, uh, one attorney twice a year, and the other attorneys every month? Is what I don't, that's what I don't get. That's, Kerry has her hand up, so maybe she has something to add.
Kerry?
I believe January, February, and March invoices are in, uh, to be approved, but they are over budget, so they cannot be paid because there is not a budget, so that needs to come to the board to address it being over budget.
Yes.
Jennifer is here, your deputy, she could speak to you any more if you'd like her to, but that's what I see. They've been entered into the system, but they cannot pass further to be approved because there's no money in the budget to pay for them at this point in time. So this needs to come to the board to be addressed.
Okay. Well, I guess my question would be, how are we spending money that we don't have? Uh, because I don't think, I think that's against our policy typically, to be spending money that's not budgeted, and secondly, that's not, that's not an acceptable answer, that they're in the system, that they're in the system. I mean, everybody's in the system. I, I mean, I got a guy paid for doing a drywall job in the system. You turn it in by this date, you get paid by this date. That's the deal. That's how township works. That's how business works. That's how you treat your subcontractors. I don't, uh, if you're telling me that it's a, a, it's the subcontractor's fault, that they're not getting their paperwork in on time, that's fine, but if that's not the case, then I, I, I think that you need to explain why we're not paying our bills on time.
Kerry?
Trustee Marocco, they're not being paid, there's level, there's policies and procedures to approve, uh, through different levels to approve those amounts, and if the money is not there to pay for it, we can't clear them, I mean, the money's there, but the money's not been allocated. It needs to come to the board for budget adjustment.
Okay. And when does that happen, and who does that? And why hasn't it happened? Because, go ahead.
That's my office, and we're working on, on that currently.
If you use...
Jennifer?
Just, okay. One comment, I guess.
Sure.
Hey, Sam, in the, in the, um, the breakdown here, you know, the legal bills are separated between offices, so, uh, I, I think the majority of the Kelly ones belong to the supervisor, so, but some of the other ones belong in other, other entities, so they, maybe that's why they're getting paid, and some are, but... Well, I understand that. It looks like the supervisor one is the one that's... I, I understand it's the supervisor's office that's not approving them. My concern is that we don't have an HR person. We've had all sorts of personnel issues. We're burning through money like crazy, consulting with the attorneys for la, all these labor issues, because we don't have an HR person, and that number, it's, you know, I don't understand why we're not doing a budget amendment if we've already burned, so you're telling me that we burned through this year's budget in January, and now we need a budget amendment? So we burned through the whole entire year of, of labor in one month, and no one's brought back a budget amendment, and now it's May, and maybe someday we're gonna pay the bill soon. That makes no sense to me. You should have known in January that we were over budget, and a much budget amendment needed to be brought to the board. That's how it works. I just, I just, I just don't like it. I think it's unprofessional, and it's not the reputation that we want, that we don't, that we can't, uh, process paperwork fast enough, and I would suggest that whatever that number is, you double it and bring it back to the board in the next two weeks, so that we can get the money to our subcontractors that earned it. That's, that's my opinion on it. I don't think I need to say anymore about it.
All right. What, Kerry, do you want to say something?
I was just gonna ask if we could bring it to the board next meeting to get his bills paid, that's all.
Sure. It's no problem. It's no problem. We did have some issues that we didn't expect, that we have some employees that have some issues with, uh, elected official, and that wasn't even part of the budget. It came, I was really surprised to see that. I will bring to the budget, but I want to bring a comprehensive number that makes sense, because we have this problem over and over and over between some employees and somebody, I don't want to bring the name today, but it's happening, and that's increasing, sending that we, we budgeted some amount of money, but we didn't expect this issue, and that's all I'm gonna say tonight. But I'm gonna bring that in the next, uh, agenda. Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run as submitted. Second?
All right. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on. All right. Um, so we move, yeah, Kerry, so now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will, as...
I'll make a motion to, uh, move into closed session to discuss a property purchase, uh, a legal opinion regarding a property purchase, and to include Richard Carlisle Township Planner to join.
Okay.
Support.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And it is 6:39 PM. And at a 6:39 PM.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to move into a closed session to discuss a property purchase, a legal opinion regarding a property purchase and to include Richard Carlisle Township Planner to join.
Okay.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And at a 6:39 PM.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to move into a closed session to discuss a property purchase, a legal opinion regarding a property purchase and to include Richard Carlisle Township Planner to join.
Okay.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And at a 6:39 PM.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the check run estimated.
All right. So we move. Yeah, Carrie. So now we're gonna do a closed session, so I will.
We are back at seven oh three.
I'd like to make a motion to reopen the meeting at seven oh three.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back. Okay.
All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Right, any questions, all members?
Questions about what?
No comments, is it?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, regular business, okay. Okay, so we start with the regular business. Carrie, number one, right? Okay. Carrie, we're starting with you, actually with.
First item under regular business is request to approve a waiver for sixty day leave requirement. Independence Township employee Don Tillman has filed to run for Independence Township Supervisor in the August sixth, twenty twenty four primary pursuant to a two thousand sixteen policy, Independence Township policy, employee of the township who elects to run for a political office within the township is required to take an unpaid leave of absence for the sixty days prior to an election. Per the policy, the employee may request a waiver of this section of the policy by seeking an appeal to the Board of Trustees. Mr. Tillman is here tonight, and I believe he does want to speak to the board regarding his appeal. As he's coming up, I'll just mention that the requested waiver is within the discretion of the Board of Trustees and may be granted by a simple majority of the board, should they wish.
All set. My name's Don Tillman, seven seven five five New York Park Drive. Yeah, I just felt that I should do the legal right way going through this like you guys want, but I feel like it's against my constitutional rights not to run and work this little part-time job. And I'd like to express myself and hopefully that you guys agree that let me carry on because I know they're shorthanded. I enjoy what I do. I'm retired, was an entrepreneur, and I'd like to continue just my little part-time job to help the community. So, that's all I have to say. I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
More questions?
Okay. He's bringing it to the board now, your host.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Paul?
So, I, you know, I went back and forth on this in my head, somewhat concerned with setting a precedent. And I, you know, we can try to understand the intent of the state statute that's put in place so that employees who hold public office don't do politicking on work time. I do understand the fact that the Parks and Rec Department is shorthanded, and I had some conversations with, with folks in the Parks Department this afternoon about that, that, you know, their concern, it's hard to get people hired to work right now. My, my initial instinct was that I don't want to set a precedent where, where, will we grant this now, but in the future we don't grant it to someone. But when you consider that it's a part-time position, I think I've kind of changed my mind. In fact, I, in my mind, maybe we want to change the policy to only apply to full-time employees. Because if the concern is you're doing political stuff while you're working, there's less risk of that if it's a part-time employee because they, they work a shorter number of hours and they have time to go out and do the things that are required to try and get elected. So, this is something that's sort of, kind of rattled around in my head just this afternoon. And so, I, I want to hear what the rest of the board thinks, but I'm certainly considering granting a waiver.
Okay. Trustee Maraco.
I think that's a valid point. I think that he's security, so, or evening work hours, so certainly less thing. I do find it kind of interesting that, a couple points. So, I'm, I think that having an employee that knows something about the operations of the township, maybe thinks they can make it better, would step up and want to run for office. So, why wouldn't? It's just like I think that people that run for office should have been in a smaller board and learn about what's going on. So, I, I think that we could, there's nothing wrong with somebody wanting to come in and run for office who actually knows how the township works. And if they've identified things they think they should do better, we should give them the opportunity to convince the residents that they should. Secondly, it kind of was popped up, so I think that in the future, if we're going to have a rule like this, which only came up in two thousand sixteen, I read the minutes, it wasn't really clear why there was a need to create it, just that the state had some regulations and we should, you know, get in line with them. It wasn't because somebody was running and trying to, you know, it just, it's not even twenty, it's not even ten years old, this rule that we've implied. So, it's not like we're breaking a longstanding tradition to allow employees to run for office. That's one point. I'm, I'm not sure if we did, if we, there is a filing date for this and some caveats of timing, which I find a little interesting because it says like you have to file thirty days prior to you filing your petition to run. Well, you wouldn't find this rule out unless you filed a petition to run, which is when Don found out the rule. So, doing it thirty days prior to that isn't, is a little bit sketchy. But we could fix that by us doing a better job of informing our employees of these rules when an election comes up with an email or a text or something to let them know, hey, there are some deadlines if you are thinking about running, you want to file this waiver, you know, before the filing date and stuff like that. So, it doesn't get to be a last minute clock ticking thing because the sixty days from August sixth is approaching quickly, and we wouldn't want somebody disqualified because they didn't follow the rules because they didn't know about the rules. So, that would be another thing. And then to have this rule so that employees can't politic during business hours certainly seems hypocritical, hypocritical to that if full-time elected officials can politic during business hours, part-time employees can't politic during business hours. I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying that you see things that happen during business hours where that's a discussion and people are promoting themselves. So, I don't think that that's fair. I think that, you know, like may the best man win, and that's just how we should roll with it. So, I'm in favor of granting him the waiver and giving him the opportunity.
Anyone else? Terry?
My only concern is when it is an employee, if there's something that needs to be discussed that nobody looks at it, like, what was your term when somebody was saying something about you, that it was political bashing or whatever? Because you are a candidate now as well as an employee, but if something came up, it's, it's seen in the wrong contents. If you have to be disciplined as the employee, oh, well, they're, they're going against me now because I'm a candidate running against them. That's the controversy I see. That's the only issue I have by, by not doing this is, and maybe that's why it came up in two thousand sixteen. Yep.
Okay. Ron?
Oh, sorry. I guess I just want to bring up some of Sam's points anyway. This is a state regulation. I guess we put it in our employee policy manual in two thousand sixteen to inform employees because we didn't have anything in our handbook at that time. So, that was one of the things we, we thought, like you said, it's like how would you know until you file? So, that's why it's put into the policy procedure manual in two thousand sixteen. So, so hopefully they, they do know about it ahead of time. And, and I guess to me, it's state government, and I guess as far as politicking on normal business hours, that's not allowed. So, I think we have hard enough time, you know, patrolling those people, much less if we had multiple people, you know, employees that were, were doing it as well. How do you police that as well? So, like I say, it is a state regulation. To me, we should just follow that. There's no need to make an exception for that. And this gentleman was, was informed the day that he filed. If I'm not, I think I'm correct.
Okay.
Right? So.
Paul?
You're good. Well, I do agree with all the comments, very good comments. I mean, I agree with, with Paul. I mean, he's a part-time employee, and, and Mr. Tillman was right, his constitutional right, the right to work. I respect that. I multiple times told everybody in the township, I do support senior citizens, and he's a senior citizen, he's coming asking for a permission, which I don't see nothing wrong with that. And, and back to you, Terry, I don't, I didn't punish anyone or anything for political views or anything. But it's a good comment, though. I know, I'm not the type of person. We have great employees, good people, and Sam, going back with, with your comment, I think, I think, I don't have any problem with what you're saying. I agree with a hundred percent with your comments about this. So, okay, I will open. Anyone else? Terry?
I just wanted to correct how you understood my statement. I didn't mean that you would say something against him as a candidate. I meant when someone came to the podium and called things out about you, how now that you're a candidate again, re-running, you were saying it was, I forgot your word, it wasn't political bashing or, so it wasn't particularly you, I was going to say, was holding it against him. I just meant in general, taking things that might be considered as, you know, not doing your job as the employee, and all of a sudden you're going to turn around to say, I'm being picked on now because I'm a candidate, they don't want me to win. So, that's all.
All right.
So, it wasn't directed at you.
Paul?
Well, I have a question for our attorney, theoretical question. If, so if we now, if we have an employee who's running for office, can we get in trouble for talking about the employee publicly? Because that's kind of a mixed bag there. We're not supposed to do that. Always been a big champion of, we don't talk about employees in public. So, now he's running for office, not that I would know anything, I don't, he doesn't work for me, and I, you know, don't know about his particular performance, but what would happen in that situation?
Yeah, you definitely should not be talking about the employee's performance at a public meeting. The employee has the right to go into closed session to have that discussion. So, performance.
But outside of a meeting, given it becomes political, and I've, somebody would have a First Amendment right, and he's a candidate, then we probably aren't going to get in any trouble by, you know.
Right. Outside of your official capacity as an elected official or an employee or a supervisor of the township, you could do it. It gets gray area, it could be an issue.
This is theoretical, but it's certainly popped into my mind because I've always said, you know, we don't talk about employees, and that's one of the things that popped up. So, I was just curious.
Right. But no, it would be fair game outside of your official capacity.
Okay.
Dan, while you're up there?
Okay.
What's that?
Can I have a question?
Sure, of course.
I just like some clarification on the, you had some data in the trustee packet.
Yeah.
Anyway, about employee engagement and political activities during business hours.
Right. No, it's strictly prohibited. The way this is structured is, is that the state law allows the board to adopt the policy that it adopted. You otherwise would not be allowed by, by law to force anybody to take a sixty day leave of absence, political or otherwise, because they have employee rights. This state law allowed the township to do it, and as we've talked about, in two thousand and sixteen, you adopted that policy to do that. So, so it's consistent with state law what the township board has done, but the policy also allowed the board the discretion to make the decision here tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And, and, okay, Carrie?
I just think we should let the public know as well that the state statute, as well as our policy, does not distinguish between part-time or full-time.
Yes, you're right.
But it does give us the opportunity for an appeal, which then it leaves the decision up to the board. It's not mandated that he would have to, he or she would have to take a leave.
Right.
Okay. Anyone would like to, who would like to comment? Anyone? Okay. On this issue.
My name's Chuck Vaughn, running for supervisor, eight five zero eight Alpham Drive. On this particular issue, it seems like, it might seem like I was going to be a little self-serving, but I'm actually going to say that I think we should allow him to run. I mean, he's going to run against me, right? The reason being is I agree a hundred percent with the fact that this is a person who is dedicated as part of their time to the township. I think they've earned the right. I do appreciate the fact that it's a very slippery slope, and I think that if you're going to allow him to run, that there should be very clear criteria for the thinking forward when this happens again, because for sure, it will happen again. And I, so, but in this particular case, since it's part-time, I think it should be allowed, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Please just tell your name and address.
David Hayward, six seven six four Berwick Drive. I agree as well, you have a part-time employee, security guard, upstanding, long-term citizen, and he wants to run, you guys can offer a waiver, give him a waiver. It's very common sense, two months. I don't see the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Darwin Moore. I live at nine one six five Eevee Road. I guess I have to question, you adopted the policy in two thousand sixteen. I heard the attorney get up here and state that you are elected officials and employees as well. So, does this apply to each of, each of you to get a waiver as well? Because if you're running, it would be the same situation as him. As an employee, you're running, you have that time as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Carrie?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna respond to that. The, the policy does state, the section does not apply to the incumbent three full-time elected officials, supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, the township policy.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The township policy states that it does not affect the current elected officials, township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer. The township policy, not the state statute, but the township policy.
Doesn't affect the three of you?
Correct.
Okay, but possibly the board.
They aren't excluded from the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
As written.
Okay. All right. Well, I will move to approve the version of Independence Township Policy three oh four, political activities by public employees. Township employee Donald Tillman to request to waive the enforcement to the policy sixty days, sixty day leave requirement.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion, Carrie. Good. Congratulations, Mr. Tillman. Okay. Sure. Okay, Brian?
Good evening, board members. The, this item is a request for budget amendment to complete the intersection improvements of Walden Center and Walden Road, an installation of a traffic signal. Some of you may be aware that in two thousand seventeen, the corridor improvement plan was created by the CIA and adopted by the board, and they called for an installation of a traffic signal to complete the internal road network of, of Walden Center and the Sashaw Town Center. Following that, the former supervisor Kittle and several of us approached the road commission and requested that a traffic light be installed, and it did not meet the warrants at that time. Walden Village was, was not even envisioned at that point. That was before COVID. But the opportunity presented itself when Walden Village was brought forward and ultimately approved, and it was placed in the permit conditions that, that the township would install a traffic light right out here and make the necessary improvements to the south side of the intersection. And so, all the signals that, that we have as part of the traffic study with Sashaw and Walden, this new one and Walters Road would all be timed correctly according to the road commission permit that was issued. In two thousand twenty one, the township board approved an agreement with the CIA to basically loan the money to the CIA in order to get the traffic signal done. An engineering quote was given at that time to be five hundred thousand. So, and that was to be paid back by the CIA to the general fund. Now, we've used about fifty thousand dollars on pre-engineering and design, which is in your packet, and we actually took this out to bid for the traffic signal. And the two bids came back a hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents difference. But again, they're way over the, the five hundred thousand that we allocated. They came in at six hundred and twenty-two thousand and three hundred and fifty dollars. That was the little bidder. So, we're pretty disappointed in that. We did have our engineering firm, Noack and Fraus, review the bids carefully, make sure all the costs were in line. And obviously, you know, due to the rising cost of inflation and everything else, obviously, since twenty-one, the costs have gone up. We even had, Noack and Fraus try to go back to these bidders and try to sharpen their pencils a little bit, and, and pretty much they couldn't get much out of it. So, what we're asking for tonight is a, basically a loan from the general fund of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the CIA would be paying back. And with the growth in CIA, our budget director didn't feel that there was any issue in getting this paid back. In terms of, Jason is here tonight from Noack and Fraus to speak about the particulars of the bids. They did a very thorough job analyzing them. And Mr. Carlisle's here, if you have any questions about the permit conditions for Walden Village and what they stated, so.
Okay. Any questions? Sam?
Carrie had her hand up first.
No, Sam, please.
So, I just had a question. How, when is the sunset on the CIA?
It is, I think, I believe it's two thousand twenty-nine, Mr. Maraco. But it could be sooner, once they complete all their obligations, pay back the board with the bonds, then they would be, they would be done. But I think, I think the, the actual date is two thousand twenty-nine.
What percent of the?
Does that sound right, Mr. Brown?
Well, has the county, I think we've maxed out the county's capture now.
We have, because of.
The county general fund? So, that one drops off, but we still look good even with that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We've done, budget director has done, they've looked at that. I mean, we're going to still be capturing both from the township and from some other tax entities. And there's been increased growth, obviously.
Is, did the mass, is the mass transit in there?
Yeah. It, it was, and that's what accelerated, that is what accelerated the capture of the county money. You see, we had a cap.
Of amount, a dollar amount cap?
Yeah, we had a dollar amount cap by agreement. That's when we originated, originated the CIA. And, and then the ability to capture the transit, and along with the other, the additional growth in the township with several new projects, that's what accelerated our, our climb towards that cap.
Cap getting to the cap.
Correct. But it will continue on until, I believe, the end of, you know, end of two thousand twenty-nine, something like that. But there is, there is going to be additional capture sufficient to pay back the board.
And we're still getting some money, like from OU or other? And we're still getting some money, like from OU or other places?
Yes.
That did not expire?
Correct.
Okay.
Any more questions, Sam?
No.
Okay, Carrie?
Uh, I think my question's for Dick as well.
I'm sorry.
Uh, does this, did the CIA make a motion to approve a set amount, or do you, or just in agreement to pay for it? I mean, do we need to go back to the CIA?
Per, I, I gotta say, they, they, yeah, they did perhaps, we may, you know, we probably will need to go back to the CIA board to get, you know, you know, to get their, you know, agreement on this, but literally, I mean, there's, they, this is their last project. They haven't, they have no, no other projects, so I, I don't see any issue with that at all.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from board members? Ron?
Like I said, just on your last comment there, I think, uh, I think it was agreed to on the, for the five hundred thousand, was it?
I think, I think.
Yeah, just the increase hasn't been agreed to yet, that's all, so.
Right.
So, I mean, it is an approved project by them, it's just.
Right, and so we should amend that, we do have the intergovernmental agreement, just, you know, like we've talked about before, uh, there's an intergovernmental agreement that will need to be amended with the CIA board.
But it's no different than, uh, any other item that you would put out there is, when you, you know, what you approve it, and then when you go to, um, actually do it, when you get the bids, you know, the bids sometimes are higher, sometimes lower.
Correct, and, and of course, we found that out with many of the projects with the CIA, and some came out very favorable, and some were a little bit over, you know, a little higher.
So, I mean, it, it looks bad that, you know, we need extra money, but I mean, it's, it's, it's kinda typical of what's happened with the CIA and Sashville, they, you know, some of the projects were under budget, some were over budget, and so.
Well, it's more typical of road improvement-related projects, uh, because it, it, there are a limited number of contractors that do this kind of work, and, uh, and, you know, the cost of materials has gone up.
True.
That's correct.
Inflation, about that. No, that's true, I mean.
He, as he sits here and talks like he's a township engineer.
Okay. Thank you, Ron, thank you, Dick.
Okay.
Terry, any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Anyone online that would like to comment about this item? No? Anyone else? No? All right, somebody wasn't ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the quote from J Rank Electric, Inc. of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, as the contractor to complete the intersection improvements and installation of a traffic signal at Walden Road and Walden Center Drive from a not-to exceed amount of seven hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars, sixty-two cents, including contingency. Direct supervisor to sign the contracts as the authorized representative of the township and approve the two thousand and twenty-four budget amendment number twelve as presented.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Okay. Brian?
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the second reading and adoption of the, uh, what we call the chicken ordinance and regulations. Uh, after the first reading, as board members will recall, we've talked about this, uh, we had a couple of just, uh, meetings where we had this as discussion. Finally, at the last, uh, meeting where we had the discussion, the consensus of the board, uh, pretty much, uh, made a determination that a permit would be, would be required for, uh, people who want chickens on one to three acres in size, and then three and above, uh, they'd have to follow Michigan GAMP standards. And just for the public's knowledge, uh, if you have one to three acres, it'd be a land use permit through, uh, the, the building department, and, um, it's, we would allow four hens on that amount of, uh, acres, and, um, you know, there's, we'd also made some recommenda, or, you know, minor tweaks to the regulations, uh, based on board member comments about how the enclosure was to be done and how the coop should be designed with the type of materials. So, uh, tonight, we're here for second reading and, and adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any questions from board members?
I do.
Tracy Morocco.
I still, uh, is, are we still not allowing the, um, uh, corrugated metal and all of that? I see it crossed off in one place, but then I see it again, that it's in there, the building material products.
Under the coop, yes, it's, it's still prohibited.
And I didn't see where it's, so, it says you have to protect the chickens, it's still, it's still a little bit sketchy for me on the, um, the pen part, whether it's elevated, not elevated, with the rat walls, 'cause if, you know, rat wall's like a footing, um, and the covering of it, the, um, it must be, you know, it has to prevent the hens from leaving and the dogs and cats and wildlife from gaining entry, so do we have a, I didn't see the, the guideline kinda for the mandating that there's a roof, or is that just at their discretion? 'Cause, um, it just, uh.
Yeah, I don't.
I just wanna be, you know, when you say they can't leave and dogs and cats and wildlife, well, that's hawks, that's birds, that means something could, they could ju, fly out, things could fly in, are we requiring them to keep it covered, or, I'm just trying to keep, we're, we're going into one acres.
Just right here.
Well, the coop has to be enclosed.
The coop must be completely enclosed, or the topper.
Well, that's the coop, but not, that's not, that's not, that's not the, where they're outside, that's when they're inside.
Yeah, but, I mean, that, you don't, you don't normally cover, you know, the, you know, the closure, you cover the building itself, so, I mean.
Well, we're putting them in a pen.
Correct, that's not covered.
That is left up to the discretion of the co, homeowner, of whether or not dogs and cats can get in, that's, that's all, and if, and the reason that I bring that up is because it's, we're putting it in one acre lot, so if there's predatory, predatory animals or, uh, other things that could get to them, um, they're vulnerable, so if it's just at the discretion of the, I just wanna make sure that's clear, 'cause before we kinda talked about enclosing them, and then, if it's on the ground, we needed a rat wall to keep like raccoons and things from, or whatever, from burrowing under, which we don't wanna put concrete foundations in around the.
Right.
Pen, so there, I know you did, you tried to clean it up as best you can, logistically, it's, it's hard to cover all the bases, let's just say that, because they still would be vulnerable, um.
Well, but, I mean, there is a certain degree of responsibility that the applicant has to take too, I mean, I don't, I mean, if they're gonna invest the time and money into raising chickens, I, I'm sure they've got, you know, they'll, I, I'll tell you, for example, I mean, I know I have some neighbors up north that have exactly that situation, they, the, the chickens go in at night, but the pen itself is open, and that's up in northern Michigan.
Right.
So, there's lots of predators up there.
No, I, I get it, I'm just saying, here for the coop, and I brought this up before, it says it must, must be maintained with a rat wall, which typically is eighteen inches deep of concrete around the perimeter of the pen, or similar cinder block foundation, or maybe raised a minimum of a foot off of the ground, which really seems unlikely that you, you know, have a floor for them to walk on a foot off the ground, you know, that seems less likely, so, uh, to keep, uh, you know, ruin some burrowing, so, uh, I just wanna make it, make sure that that's not a hint if you're gonna do it, I'm not a fan of it, but to make them put in a rat wall or elevate it, I don't know how, um, you know, how easy that would be, or how logical that would be to, to, to mandate they have to have a concrete foundation going around it, if it's on the ground, that seems, I'm not even in favor of the ordinance, but that seems excessive for what they're asking for, and it, and if it says it has, it says it has to have that, you know, I don't.
Let me, let me just say, you know, and I think I mentioned this when this came before the board many, many months ago, uh, you know, we tried to follow the guidance that we got from the Cooperative Extension Service in writing these regulations. My recommendation to the board is, is either decide that you wanna move forward with this or, or not. We may have to come back at some point in time and modify this, just like we do with a lot of ordinances, once we gain some practical experience here in this community, um, and we're gonna learn something from the people that are doing it. But, until we have an ordinance, we can't even allow people to do it, if they're doing it, they're doing so, you know, in violation of our zoning ordinance, so, I, I realize that there are a lot of nuances here about that, um, but, uh, we've tried to follow, you know, the, the info, the best information we have in, in writing these regulations and what the advice is from the Extension Service.
I just, looking at it, if I did want chickens.
Right.
I think that, um, mandating that rat wall is almost overkill, if they, you know, and very expensive, and it's concrete, and it's a footing, and you have to get it in your backyard to dig it up and get rid of all the dirt that's generated from digging an eighteen inch deep trench around the whole thing and pouring it full of concrete, even not being for the ordinance, I think that's too much to ask of a resident that wants chickens, you know, um, as a, as a, you know, as a mandated part of it, I think there's other ways that they could.
Well, I was gonna say, is it too much to ask to raise it one foot?
Well, I don't, what do they wa, I don't know what they're walking on, I mean, is it like a wooden platform that they're walking on that's a foot off the ground?
Yes, it's like an elevated deck.
Is it too much to ask? I don't think, I just, I don't think that's the best practical way of doing it, I think the chickens on the grounds makes the most sense, I think that we should, we could make it a little more obtainable for people, instead of something so permanent that when they move or that, you know, how do you get rid of all this concrete when you don't want chickens? I mean, there's other ways, I've used corrugated steel panels and dug them down in the ground and laid them in as a deterrent for burrowing animals, like there's other, um, there's, maybe we could just change the language to say that there's a, a means provided to prevent burrowing of animals into the pen or something, so it gives the people a little more creative and flexible idea at the judgment of the planet, building department, so that we're not mandating they put a concrete foundation in their backyard just to see if they want chickens, you know, I, I, and, um, again, I'm not pushing for the ordinance, but I also wanna be fair, uh, with my construction background to what we're asking people to do, you know.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Christina Lamato.
I was just gonna say, there are a couple options, most of the chicken coops I've seen with people are the little houses, they walk up a ramp, they are elevated, and I think that's the easiest solution, that's ninety percent of the ones I've seen.
But, we're talking about what they're in outside the pen, is what we're talking about, not the.
I thought you were trying to give them both options for.
It's an either or.
Yeah, it's an either or.
It's, it's either a rat wall or an elevated, uh, platform.
Right, but I, I think that what she's referring to is, um, uh, you know, the, uh, if you're gonna have a, so, okay, I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, it's elevated, it's either, you know, some type of barrier, a concrete barrier, or it's, um, or it's elevated. But you know what, if you wanna amend, uh, request an amendment to say concrete or some, or, or other material approved by the building official, I would have no problem with that.
And I'm referring more to the pen than the coop, even though that's in the coop thing, the pen line says that you can, you know, it can, has to be to keep wildlife from gaining entry, which is the same thing as saying the coop, the, the rat wall and the elevation is to keep animals from getting, gaining entry, so the pen is kinda, if you're saying they have to make it where the, the pen can't gain entry, that's the same thing you would do, is you would use a rat wall or you would.
But, but we're not saying.
Elevate it, okay.
I mean, we're not saying the pen has to have a rat wall, it's a fence.
Okay, but.
The coop is the structure.
Got it. Okay, that's, that's fine how you guys got it.
And if they fly the coop, so to speak, it's their problem.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else would like to comment? Yes, please, can you please come to the podium and state your name and address?
Hi there, if it pleases the board, I'm Renee Langloy, and this is Christian DeForty, we're residents at seven 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 one Southeastern Road. Um, if you guys didn't notice, we're here for the chickens. Um, Christian and I, um, come from farming families, but we were raised in, uh, the metro Detroit area. Um, we were both born in Warren, um, and in those towns, they have chickens, and have ordinances to support chickens. Um, so, when we moved here last year, we came to this very building and had to fill out some homestead paperwork, because the people who sold us our home were flippers and they were not homesteaded. When we were here, we talked to the zoning ordinance gentleman at the building, who was recently just off vacation. He told us that there was no ordinance on chickens in Independence Township and to go ahead and get some chickens. So now, Christian and I are stuck in a situation where we have these chickens on one point seven five acres of Southeastern Road, and less than a mile from our house, there's a beef farm where we can hear, uh, cows bellaring all night and day, and a mile from our house, there's a horse farm. So here, we thought we were moving to a town of Independence, and now they're telling us that we can't keep our chickens. And I'm talking to you now as a mother, I have a twelve-year-old son and an eight-year-old daughter, and all they wanted was birds. We moved out of Rochester Hills and where they do also allow chickens, not, you know, the HOAs sometimes don't, but there are areas in Rochester where there are chickens, and we got their birds, Marshmallow, Buffy, Elizabeth, and Peeps, and they love these birds. My son will come home from a long day of middle school, and he refers to his birds as emotional support animals. And as people that were from farming families, we are foragers, food preservers, we've got a ten thousand square foot garden that we do every year, and bringing home eggs from our own backyard is kinda become our lifestyle. And Sam, you're right, it's up to us to protect these birds, and as we ate our dinner before the board meeting tonight, we heard coyotes hollering outside. Trust me, the bird owners are gonna protect their chickens, we don't need to put an eighteen inch concrete wall in, but what we usually do is use hardware cloth, and we put about an eighteen inch sheath along the ground outside them, so any burrowing animals can't get directly into what you're trying to refer to as a run. The coop itself, yes, as you were saying, Teresa, is somewhere where the birds come in at night, they naturally come in, they wanna protect themselves, they come up a ramp, and they're elevated in this coop-like structure and protected for the evening. The run is where they come out in the daytime, there are people that have uncovered runs, you know, when we let our chickens out in a run that's uncovered, we're outside with them to protect them from hawks, coyotes, foxes, skunks, opossums, all the animals that like to eat chickens, not just us humans. So, I, I, I came today to tell you guys that there are people out here in Independence Township, we're living in more rural subdivisions than are what are being built nowadays in this township, and we really do want the freedom to be able to provide our families with some yard birds. I'm a chicken mama now too, not just a kitten mama, and we really do do our diligence to make sure that our birds are not destructive, they're not interruptive to our neighbors, I'm not gonna speak for my neighbors, but I do know there are other people around my neighborhood that do have birds, and we are in a special area where I feel like one to three acres is an appropriate amount of space for us to have chickens, and that's all I have to say about it, so thank you so much for listening, and it's nice to meet our board.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming. Right, anyone? Okay.
Charles Fow, Alcorn Drive, I just have a quick question, we're already over budget on the legal, so, does the HOA trump this ordinance? Yeah, I just wanna make sure, yeah? Okay.
We don't have an HOA or something.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to? Sure.
All right, can you hear me all right?
If I can. John, can you emit? We can hear you, yeah?
Okay, excellent, thank you. Uh, David Thompson, five four four five, Winell Street. Um, I am unmuted, can you hear me now?
Still can't hear you.
John?
Okay, it should be good now.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
No.
Uh, technical issues.
It's not working.
No, it isn't.
Oh, somebody's, I think.
Thompson, five four four five, Winell Street.
He's already fixing it right now, it's ready.
Can someone give me a thumbs up when I'm ready to go?
I see John is trying to fix it. I wonder if his, if his N. It must be.
Okay, John says he can hear me and he's working on a fix.
He did, somebody typed something in a chat, but it's gone.
That was John.
We have a technology person who is trying to fix that issue. Not successfully.
Is there anyone else in the audience here that would like to speak while they're working on it?
Yeah. Anyone else would like to speak?
I have a question for Brian.
Yeah, but.
While we're waiting.
But, we have, anyone else willing to speak? I guess we came with you, what is your question, Sam?
The permit fee, Brian, has that been established yet and is that by action of the board?
It's, it's the normal land use fee of seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
We just tried to keep it as simple as possible and do it that way.
Is that a annual fee or?
Yeah.
John, can we suggest he leave the meeting and then try to reconnect again and see if that helps?
He's texting. Yeah, that's what he's suggesting right now.
It sounds better already.
Okay. Looks like it's all right.
Yes.
All right, Dave.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. Sorry to be the technical problem for you this evening. David Thompson, five four four five, Winell Street, obviously Clarkson, Michigan. I apologize, if I'd realized this was on the agenda, I'd have been there with my children in force. I have been trying to get the agenda, for some reason it's not actually online yet, so we're gonna that. Anyway, when it comes to chickens, this has been a big issue we've been talking about recently. I live on less than half an acre, so we're a much smaller parcel. We have in my neighborhood a number of neighbors who have expressed the wish that they could have chickens. And having had experience with chickens myself, my wife has experienced with chickens growing up, as well as a number of other animals, I can tell you that less than half an acre is still plenty of room for chickens. Picking up what I've been able to pick up from the discussion about this proposed ordinance, it sounds like it is entirely too cumbersome. This is Independence Township. I mean, by name and by logo, we seem to wanna stand for the liberty that made this country great. And I would suggest that perhaps not tying down such a basic freedom of Americans to raise our own food and have our own animals is probably a good way to go about that. So I would suggest that rather than saying, hey, pay us money, come get a permit to use your property the way you see fit that we're paying ever-increasing taxes for and that we're paying mortgage on and insurance for, things like that. How about, and, and some of the, I understand some of the concerns about, you know, protecting from pests and things like that. Believe me, again, experienced with that. And as the lady just a few minutes ago noted, those of us who spend our time and money and effort and energy on chickens, we don't want them eaten by predators either. We're gonna find effective ways. Ronald Reagan was a great fan of stating that people know better than government, even at the local level, how to run our lives. We certainly have a lot of vested interest in keeping those critters alive and contained. We don't really want them running off either. So I would say, I would suggest that for an ordinance, what we probably should do is make it as simple and open as possible. Yes, of course, you can have chickens. Don't be a nuisance. And if we actually have problems, we can then come back and say, hey, turns out we have people allowing their chickens to run them up, which I don't see as gonna be a problem. And at that point, we can start adding some restrictions if necessary. I would suggest, again, keep it simple, open it up. Simply say, yes, we don't have chickens. And a permit, that's a little, I don't know, that's a little much. So that's my, that's my opinion on the matter. I wish I'd had the time to review, review the, the proposed ordinance before this. That's on me, I didn't realize it was going on, but thank you for the time and that's my opinion on the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Sure, please, come to the podium, address your name and address.
Christian DeForty, seven 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 one Southeastern. When I had chickens back in Warren, you know, you're talking about houses at a rate on top of one another pretty much. We were allowed to have four birds and it was a thirty-five dollar one-time fee. Well, it was three, three years actually. So seventy-five dollars every year is awfully steep to be able to have chickens. I mean, I just, I don't think that that's very practical, but that's really it.
Okay. Darwin? State your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Darwin Moore, I live at nine one six five E V. Excuse my ignorance, I, I didn't come to the first reading or I wasn't aware of the first reading, but I'm a little confused, is the purpose of this ordinance? From what I'm hearing, the ordinance sounds like it's to protect the chickens. Is that correct? I mean, we're talking about building, construction for the coops and everything else, but I hear a little bit of talk from people about nuisances. So I'm not sure I even understand the purpose of the ordinance. Is it because we don't want people to have chickens or people complaining about it? Or are chickens getting eaten and we're feeding wildlife? I don't really follow what the purpose of the ordinance is. And if it's that ambiguous, then I don't think it should be approved tonight until it's clarified and the details are much clearer.
More clear than, okay.
Well, I can answer that. Currently, it's against the ordinance to have chickens on less than three acres. That's what, that's why the ordinance has been brought forward. The township ordinance prohibits fowl or chickens on less than three acres in Independence Township. It's been like that for a long time. Someone else came to the planning commission with a petition, asking to have us discuss it to see if we would make some provisions to allow it between one and three acres to be a little bit more flexible for people. So that's why this exercise is happening, is because currently they are prohibited on less than three acres, period.
Okay, that's not the understanding. I got from someone else that got up and spoke a minute ago. They moved to the township, they came in and asked, and they were told that there was no ordinance regarding chickens and that they could have them, so.
That's incorrect. They got bad information.
Okay.
So this is an amendment to the already ordinance that doesn't allow them, period, on less than three acres.
So we've expanded on that to allow it on less, but then we've added much more to it to, to, to make it.
Due to the proximity of the neighbors' houses, setbacks and distances for, you know, and, and rules were applied to not be as invasive. We found out that, you know, the majority, maybe eighty, ninety percent of the subdivisions, Brian, at least have eight acre parcels. So even though there's very dense subdivisions, there are acre parcels. So that's a township-wide ordinance that covers a lot, a lot of neighborhoods in the township now would be able to have chickens on one acre parcels. So it is somewhat introducing somewhat, something that can be invasive into a neighborhood if the person, you know, has a rooster and doesn't know it, and then they have a rooster, and then that's a problem. And, you know, the sex of the chicken, the smell, the cleaning up. You know, anytime you have something like that, you're introducing into a denser area, they typically put some sort of guidelines. Whether these are too stringent or not, that's a different discussion, but that's how this all was born, if that's accurate, Brian.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I tried to look through the packet, but that was almost six hundred pages, so it's hard to get all the information out of that.
And this has been going on for, since last, early last spring, so it's been a year that this has been being talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though. Brian, would you like to add something?
Yeah, just one point of clarification, Sam's right. I mean, there are a lot of subdivisions with acre parcels, it's just their HOA may not even allow them. So that, you know, they'll provide that evidence if that's the case.
Okay. All right, anyone else here? Terry?
I, I agree with the yearly seventy-five dollar fee. I think it's ridiculous. The reason they're raising their chickens is to save money and provide for their family. I'd be all in favor of doing a one-time or change it that if they are causing issues for their neighbors, that there's a fine imposed instead. I think that fee totally goes against what they're doing it for.
So you're su- you're suggesting reduce the fee or?
Yeah, get rid of that seventy-five dollars, just give them a permit. And if they have issues with some neighbors complaining or they're not following the ordinance or they get complaints, that there's a fee instead. But I think the seventy-five dollar yearly thing is too much.
Yeah, if there's any violations, it's a municipal civil infraction, so it's a three hundred dollar fine.
Okay.
With the court.
Well, I think that the original idea of the permit fee, like any permit fee, is the manpower that's being exhausted by it, they gotta do the permit, they have to go out and inspect that the coop is going to be adequate enough to protect the residents who are adjacent to them, that they're not gonna get out of it. It's not so flimsy that it doesn't work. And then there's another annual, this says there's another annual surprise inspection during the year to make sure you're still in compliance. So I think that seventy-five dollars was to offset the cost of the manpower to, for the enforcement of the ordinance to be able to do it, you know. Hopefully, everyone's gonna be a good steward, but you don't know that. I had a neighbor's chickens down at my house walking around the top of my cars in my garage, you know. Well, so I'm a little tainted in my opinion of people's chickens. And people like to free-range them until they get caught, and then they don't. And so there is some, you know, there's risk to, in my opinion, to the quality of life or aggravation or nuisance to the neighbors when you introduce chickens into a backyard, same as dogs would be. That there's always, you know, somebody's gotta make sure that you're not having a negative impact on your neighbor. And that's why there's, there has to be some oversight, and that's where the fee came up. It was a hundred hours, we talked about originally, a year ago, and now it's down to seventy-five, so.
It's always been seventy-five.
Was it seventy-five? I thought we were, wasn't determined yet, okay.
And this is a standard fee, right? We can lower it.
And it covers other things besides chicken coops to the special areas, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
So we change it.
It's a land use fee, so it could be a shed. Most of the time, people will get land use permits for sheds or special events in a commercial setting. So like the Chamber gets a, you know, a commercial land use permit to do their trucks, you know, their food trucks rally. So it's, it's just a standard fee, it's just gonna be allocated differently in terms of how we classify it in our, you know, internally in their system.
Treasure Brown?
The difference is special land use permits, once, they don't typically recur every year, right?
Resident, we're talking about two different things. Special land use is different than this. This is a land use permit, not a special land use.
Okay.
So land use permits are issued internally.
Is there any reason we can't have it be for two years? Sort of, 'cause it kinda cuts it in half, really, and we're still getting out there. We go out the first time, make sure everything's good, and then if there's a complaint, we're gonna hear about it and then you can find out. But otherwise, maybe we kind of split the difference and call it a two-year permit. Any objection to that?
The problem is that permit, that, that brand of that permit covers other things besides chicken coops.
Well, but, but it'd be specific to chickens.
Right, I mean, as long as we make it specific.
I mean, the ordinance speaks specifically to the period of time that the permit for this is good for.
So that permit could be good for twenty-four months and not impact other permits.
It would not affect anything else.
I thought I read in here it expired March thirty-first every year.
We'd have to modify it slightly.
Okay, but I think that is in here somewhere. I can't find it, but I read it somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. So it has a.
So we can.
Well, I'm just saying that, that's one thing about, we did it with the food trucks. We had that discussion where if you pull the permit, you move into the neighborhood, you want chickens. You pull it in January, it expires March thirty-first. If you pull it April first, it's good till March thirty-first. So it's, it, the, the ordinance has a, has a provision in it that has an expiration date the same time every year, so it's easy for them to know whose permits are expiring. So it's not every day a different permit's expiring. So we would need to address the March thirty-first renewal date annually if you're talking about extending it, you know, a couple of years or something.
Twenty-four months.
Work the bugs out, you know.
Yeah, it's a minor change.
Minor, it's just twenty-four months and.
So we can amend it now.
Well, I think Brian needs to tell us how hard it would be, would we, to have them expiring every, you know, all over the year, you know.
We don't want that, because they don't wanna have to go out and inspect a chicken coop in the middle of winter, I think. I think if they're doing it in the spring, it's easier, right?
Yeah, it is, but, I mean, we, we put tickers in our system to even know, you know, we would, we would have it in our system already to go out there. And so, you know, and we're also not gonna babysit people who get these permits and send out letters and say, to say it's expiring or anything like that. You know, it's up to the homeowner's responsibility to follow the terms of the permit. So I, you know, it's a pretty simple change. If the board feels like you wanna make it good for two years, that's fine. We can make a minor change in the ordinance, it's not, not too difficult. But, yeah, I mean, the reason we picked March is because it's generally beginning of spring, you know, to where it's a little easier to get out there and not trounce around in the snow, so.
Okay. All right, so we can make a motion with that modification, the same state, we can do this.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Ready? I'll move to approve the second reading as amended to the two-year timeframe for the, for the fee and adopt an amendment to the Charter of Township Independence Ordinance Code, Chapter fifty, zoning ordinance, provisions to Article two and Section five point one one, including the addition of a new Article four in Chapter eight of the General Code of Ordinances relating to keeping of chickens and direct the clerk to publish notice in the manner prescribed by law.
One second.
All right, is Rolko?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
No.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Finally done with that one.
Okay, we're going, moving on? For, this is the budget amendment for the DDA property. Yeah, I would like to have Dick and I know David, one second, so, okay.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we are ready, please.
As, as the board knows, with your approval of the DDA, they've begun their activities.
Yeah, can we get order so we can, please? Thank you.
All right.
Uh, the DDA has begun their activities. Uh, David Gittens, our chair, is here. Uh, the board, the board met, started meeting, well, had a meeting last year, and has started meeting again this year, and formed subcommittees. And one of the priority projects of the DDA Board that is in the plan and that is identified by, by the DDA Board is to create township entry identification. And that is, you know, more than just a sign. It's an entry into the township. And as a result of those discussions, uh, with actually two different subcommittees, uh, came back to the meeting of, of the board, full board, and, um, had located a piece of property where the very first township entry, uh, project could be, uh, could be established. And that's right on the border of, of Waterford and Independence on Dixie Highway. Located a piece of property, it has been on the market. Uh, in consultation with the Township Attorney's Office, there was a, uh, a negotiation of, with the MO, an MOU, which was non-binding, and that was to arrive at a price so that we could establish a price and, um, get a commitment from the property owner that they were willing to sell it to us, and, uh, that the DDA wanted to move forward with the purchase of this property. Later on, uh, through advice of the Township Attorney's Office, as it's, as it's written in the, in the MAF, um, because there's a sunset date, uh, of the DDA, the, uh, the advice from Township Attorney's Office is that, that actually the township hold title to the property, but that the DDA be granted, uh, through agreement, a lease agreement, the use of the property to establish a township entry, if that's fine. And again, I wanna emphasize that this is more, this property is a forty by one, one hundred and some feet property, so it has the ability to be, you know, nicely landscaped. It could actually ultimately be used as some kind of stop along Dixie Highway. Uh, we, we are not going to promote, we're not going to allow access to the property by automobiles, but it will be on the safety path system. And the idea is to create this really beautifully landscaped entry into the township, which right now does not exist. So, uh, the, uh, the purchase price, uh, was arrived at, uh, it's in, it's in the MAF, and, um, the, the request is to, is to, is it a budget, budget amendment, was, that was where the request was, but I know that that might, you know, it, it's really simply to purchase the property and then enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the DDA Board to repay the purchase price of the property. Now, in discussions with Budget Director Jaeger, uh, the DDA has budgeted a hundred and twenty-four thousand this year. That will come through tax increment financing dollars. Uh, it's going to increase annually. Over the next three years, there'll be over, uh, over four hundred thousand, close to four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in tax increment financing dollars captured. So the ability to repay the board for the money that's, that is being, uh, put forth, you know, advanced to purchase this property, there, there won't be any problem. And they'll still have money in their budgets subsequently to, uh, to be able to do other projects and to improve this property. So, um, the plan, I mean, you need, you know, bind this, you know, simply, we didn't wanna mislead anybody by preventing, presenting, preventing a detailed plan at this point, because it's, there's more work that the DDA has to do, to really arrive upon that. You know, a sign has to be designed, landscaping concept has to be developed. Probably there'll be some seeding on the property, you know, next to the safety path. There might ultimately be an area there where that, if, if transit ever comes out here, it'll be a potential good spot for transit, where we could apply for a grant, uh, through the county transit funds. So, uh, that's the idea behind it, but without the piece of property, without a piece of property, we're not, we're not gonna be able to move forward with this, this project that has been envisioned for frankly, a long time. Really began many, many more, many years ago, before the DDA was reformed, to have an entry signed, uh, at some point at that point in the township. So, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, and Mr. Kelly is obviously here, too.
Sure. I would like to invite also the, the chairman of the DDA, David Gittens. David is doing an excellent, excellent job of helping the community a lot, volunteering his time for the DDA. David?
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, board. Uh, I'm Dave Gittens. I, uh, my address is five three seven six Sunnyside Drive. I'm the chairman of the DDA Board. Um, Mr. Carl outcovered pretty much everything. He didn't leave much for me. But I guess what I wanna add is that we have a lot of projects that we wanna accomplish with the DDA, and what this is going to allow, the, the main vision for the DDA is to beautify Dixie Highway. We wanna bring in new business. We want to encourage people to move in, you know, uh, new investments. When that happens, the tax revenue's gonna go up. Um, and so this spot is really the entrance point to get into this part of the district. There's multiple entry points into this district of Dixie Highway, um, but this is really going to allow us to, um, put a park there, put a destination, whether you're biking, or, or running, or walking, or whatever. And as you mentioned, there might be, um, transit one day down the road. That's something that we could get additional funding from, um, outside of our TIP funds. Um, so it's really, it's a, uh, something that we can do now. There's other things that we wanna do. We wanna do branding. Uh, we wanna do a slogan. We want to, you know, obviously have safety paths and, um, increase safety at different, um, you know, entry points, like, I know that White Lake Road in Dixie, there's a lot of accidents that happen there. So we have a lot of things that we hope to accomplish, but this allows us to show the public that, hey, this is the destination that you're coming to, and it kinda paints the picture that, that in the future, we're going to continue to invest money, um, and then that investment's going to, to come back full circle, because, um, you know, there's gonna be people that are wanting to, business owners that are going to want to be in that area, 'cause they see that us at a, as a township are doing our part to support them.
Thank you, David, and that's true. For many, many years, a lot of people, a lot of residents has been asking me, Jose, we need to do something on Dixie Highway. And thanks to the board, I wanna thank all of you here for allowing me, allowing, you know, them to create, to react to the DDA, and the DDA have a lot of projects to make it more safer, more, uh, make it a friendly environment for business people, you know. It was some empty buildings up there, and now with the DDA, with the commitment with David Gittens and many other residents and members working to make it more safer, more attractive for business, I think this is a great thing. And I know nobody disagrees with that. I think all of you agree where we always wanna improve and help Dixie Highway. So I totally support this. And Dick, Mr. Carillo?
I think what we're asking the board for is, um, to authorize Township Attorney to, uh, you know, negotiate, uh, the final purchase agreement, which will obviously, before it's finally done, it'll have to come back to the board, and to acknowledge that it will, that the money that the Township Board will pay for this property will be reimbursed by the, uh, DDA over a period of three years to be, uh, to be, to be acknowledged in an intergovernmental agreement between the DDA Board and the Township Board. So those are really the, the two things that we're asking for tonight. So it's really an authorization to go on to the next steps.
Sure. Treasure Brown?
As part of that, uh, Mr. Kelly, if we could make sure we look at requirements related to charging of interest on, on that, and if it's required, make sure we do that as would be appropriate.
Okay. Trustee Ritchie? No, I'm sorry. I said you.
Uh, just, I guess, my comment, and I think, I, I think the, uh, the property can be a good entryway into the, uh, the township, and, um, I guess, um, my confusion at the beginning was that in the, in the package, uh, the MAF didn't really describe what you were trying to do with this. It sounded like you wanted to buy a piece of land to put a sign on, not, not approve it to, uh, to the point like you discussed tonight, so.
Thank you.
So I just, uh, in case anybody thought I was not, not in favor of this, I just wanna clarify that, so.
Thank you, Ron. Thanks for your clarification. Sam?
I'll make a few points. Since I've been, uh, part of the project, I'm on the DDA. Um, I think it's a, I mean, it's, it's the ideal spot. It's the right size. It checks all the boxes. Uh, the owner's been very accommodating with us, uh, with time, and I think with the pricing, um, it's a perfect opportunity for us to really do something dramatic on the corridor. Um, we have a lot of talk about incl- including the DDA members. Once they see that we're actually doing something, the other business owners on the corridor to contribute, um, also nonprofits. It gives us, uh, gives us a lot of opportunity for volunteer participation, for donations, um, in- information to people coming into the town, um, where you could possibly have memorials or sculptures, or lots of different things. Certainly corridor identification. Um, one key point is that, uh, the cost of it is gonna be covered, uh, by, uh, a good portion of taxes that we would've gave to Oakland County, the Mass Transit, Oakland University, and other entities that we contribute money to. So we're able to capture that money that would've been leaving to invest in the corridor. Uh, so that's, that's a huge deal. Um, and, um, it's really an opportunity for us to, to spark something really major in the corridor, to let all the other business know, uh, members know that we're committed to, um, revitalizing Dixie. It's also the, uh, the old Saginaw Trail. It's a historical road. It's, uh, um, David and his, uh, subcommittee have been working diligently on po- potential sign ideas, um, and specific branding for the corridor. So, um, it's, it's really a win-win, and it's, and it is moving fast, but that's good for us, because we're gonna be able to make some major improvements. Where normally, we'd be waiting years and years to accumulate money to do a project, and this gives us an opportunity to, um, uh, get the DDA, uh, out there in front of everybody and, um, make a very sp- uh, specific, um, um, architectural and, um, uh, just, uh, uh, greenways plan coming in out of Waterford, which is more, uh, commercial in that stretch, and that, you know, it's gonna give us that nice break that we need to, to finally delineate us and, and show our boundary.
Treasure Brown?
I think I've mentioned this a few times over the years, but sometimes we get new people, and they hear us talking about CIAs and DDAs and spending money, and I, I try to throw out in layman's terms, um, kinda what that means. And to make it simple, we'll just take Dixie Highway. We have a base of what the values are of the properties there that started a year ago, and let's just take one building. So there's a building that's worth half a million dollars. Our plan is to make improvements on Dixie Highway, which should increase the value of that half-million-dollar building. So let's say it increases the value to six hundred thousand dollars. So we know it started at five hundred. In a couple of years, it's worth six hundred, so there's an extra hundred thousand dollars of value on that building. That extra value will generate additional taxes. And the law allows us, either a DDA or a CIA, to capture some of the new tax money that's generated because we made the improvements to help pay for the improvements. So it's just, and by the way, only people who are in the district, property owners in the district, have monies captured, not people who aren't in it. So the money that's captured to make those improvements is tied directly to Dixie Highway, or with the CIA, it was on Sashaba Road and all the improvements that were made there over the years. So just thought I'd throw that out, clarify it for folks.
Well, the money is captured from those people, but it goes back into the area of those people as well, so.
Exactly.
Anybody that thinks it's a penalty is really, you know, hopefully turns out to be a positive, because it goes back to help the people in that same district, so.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Anyone else? Anyone online? Please, state your name and address.
My name is Jessica Spencer, and I live at six-two-seven-zero Walden Woods. I was just curious, and it may be not appropriate or not timely enough for this particular property, but is there ever an opportunity for maybe a, a small business who went out of business, or something like that, to donate their property so that the township ends up dedicating it as a park, or something like that, and then the township could re, could give them some kind of, uh, some kind of tax deduction, or, so instead of the township paying for this property, just to use this one as a hypothetical, instead of paying however much for that property, giving that person who donated it an in-kind contribution, so they don't have to pay taxes on the income from their capital gains, they just have a, whatever, thousands of dollars worth of tax refund, or over a certain amount of years. I, I'm just thinking, is there a way that, because it's being donated to a park, as a park, that the business owner could get a tax benefit, and the township wouldn't have to pay for that property?
Sure. Paul?
That's not unusual for that to happen, but typically what will happen is the seller of that property would, would, under advice from his accountants, get an appraisal that might show that property worth more than we paid for it. And then we could certainly talk about the township indicating that he's made a charitable contribution, but given the dollar amounts and the cost of appraisals, I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Okay.
But yes, that, that happens somewhat regularly when, when folks make contribu- when folks sell something for less than it's actually worth to a nonprofit or a government entity.
Okay. So i- is there a way for the township to incentivize small businesses and maybe homeowners and things like that? Is there a way that maybe Mr. Gittens is really smart, knows a ton about real estate? Uh, is there a way that we as a community could put forward an effort in, in encouraging people to do something like that? Would that be a, a job of the, um, board that he's on? Is that something that, how, how could we as a community en- encourage people to do, to do something like that?
I can speak on that.
Sam?
So I know that the Residential Open Space Advisory Committee looks at land acquisitions to gain open space, hoping for something like that to be part of the deal, you know, that that would be a board that actually has an actual group that identifies open space in the community, and then try to find creative ways that we could get someone to donate it for us. And that typically, the value do- doesn't amount to the, the tax credit we can give the person, so it, they don't really come out as whole as if they sold the property, depending on their financial situation, you know. Only if they needed that huge of a write-off.
Sure.
So it'd have to be in a certain particular situation for that to happen. But what you're talking about, we do have people in the township, I know at least on that committee, that's, that's identifying property, talking to homeowners. Uh, there's other parcels where the people are getting older and have, um, also brought that up, that, that some kind of deal, not necessarily all-in, but.
Or over a certain number of years or something, or maybe they donate a percentage of the property each year for however many years, so that that makes sense to them over time. I.
And I know that, uh, to, Blue Heron is actively pursues that same exact, um, thing you're talking about, is land conservancies, and trying to, uh, have people donate, um, to, you know, that would be a tax write-off for the Blue Heron. So those are two groups that I'm affiliated with, that I know at least, uh, do things like you're, try to get deals like you're talking about.
Okay.
You know, that are local, at least.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Ritchie?
I think the short answer to all this is if somebody wants to donate something to the township, we'll most likely find a way to take it.
All right. All right. Right, no, that's a good question.
So, yes, donate your property.
Yeah. Yeah, we're welcome to any donations or shit. But thank you, Jessica. Thank you. All right. Uh, I guess, no one else? Somebody would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to move to adopt Resolution number twenty-two-four dash zero-one-five of the Board of Trustees authorizing the purchase of property located at.
Uh-huh. Uh, that wasn't gonna be where.
Oh.
We're basically gonna authorize.
Mr. Kelly to.
Yeah.
Put together the agreement, along with the DDA, for an intergovernmental agreement between the Township of Independence and the DDA.
With interest.
With interest.
If required.
And still put what you want the property address, correct?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Property located at fifty-eight fifty-four Dixie Highway.
I support that motion.
You do?
Heck, yeah.
Does that cover everything again?
Yeah.
All right. Simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, David, again, for coming, for your time and for the hard work. Thank you. Thank you, Dick, everyone. Thanks. Appreciate it. All right. It's good. Okay. Or DPW Director, Dave Mackey. Dave, please, Dave?
Good evening, everyone.
I need my shirt, Dave.
Hey, thanks a lot. Did I tell you where I bought it?
What?
Cracker burn.
Great shirt.
Can I sell both to Cracker Barrel?
I love it, it's comfy. There we go. So good evening, everyone. Tonight I'm here before the board to get approval to conduct our complete distribution system material inventory. What is that? So quite frankly, it's a long-term, very long-winded term that the state of Michigan has come up and mandated, along with the Environmental Protection Agency, that every public water system in the state of Michigan must do a distribution system materials inventory. What is the inventory? Inventory is essentially we have to physically verify the water service line from the water main to the shut-off that's in somebody's yard, we have to identify the pipe material. We have to physically dig it up and identify it. We have to physically look at and identify the pipe material from the cutoff, the shut-off valve in somebody's yard under the private property side. We also have to verify the pipe material that comes into the person's home, the resident's house. We have to physically go in there and do that. That is exactly what this program is about in a nutshell. This all was created back in 2018, so I got some PowerPoint slides here that kind of really break it down. In 2018, Michigan revised its lead and copper rule. Why did they revise the lead and copper rule? It's our friends that live north of us a little ways, you know? The Flint water crisis really caused a lot of changes, they're good ones, you know? It really, as a water professional, I agree with a lot of the changes they came up with. However, this one here along with the EPA is a totally 100% unfunded mandate that they're making all of us do. Everybody has to do this. So some of the changes in there is the sampling method we have to do for lead and copper, changes in tiering criteria, lead service line notification requirements. Now I want to stop right there and just let everybody know, in the 10 years that I've been here, we have not identified one lead service line in Independence Township, and that's a great thing. My previous employer, just to the south of us, literally, had lead service lines. Lead service lines was banned in Michigan in the eighties, and we're fortunate here that we have never run across one here. If we did find one, and this is part of the new law that's out there, just so to give you some perspective on this, the municipality is responsible 100% for the cost to install a new line from the water main all the way into the customer's house, through private property, it's 100% on the public utility to pay for that. So I have a ultimate high confidence that we won't find any. You never know, but I'll never say never. But all these rule changes right there moving forward are based on the new lead and copper rules, so you're going to see a lot of that in my little presentation that I have right here. We had to change lead and copper sampling plans, we still do that, we have to do that because we do have copper service lines. And then in January of 2020, we were required to submit our preliminary distribution system material inventory. What is that? That's just the, what do you got right now? What can you tell us you have right now? We complied with that in November of 2019, we turned that in. The next big piece for this is requirements for the completion of the complete distribution system material inventory. Now if you look on the notes right there on the bottom, it was due January 25th to 25th. The federal government in December of last year decided to really get involved with this, and they changed a lot of the rules, they changed a lot of the reporting requirements, and they actually moved the reporting date to have this done by 11 weeks. So on January 1st, it's now due October 16th. So this kind of right here just gives you the, the rule is, it says, "A supply shall submit a complete distribution systems materials inventory, including verification methodology and provide the results of the inventory to the department in a form and manner specified by the department. Materials inventory under the substructure shall identify whether and where construction material is listed or present in the piping, storage structure, pumps, controls." That is the guidance. So what I explained how this works is the verification process, this is what that means right there. So what is the purpose of why are they doing this? This is the part that I do understand, the purpose is to characterize, record, maintain and comprehend this inventory of your distribution system materials. We need to know what they have, what the piping is, what size it is, including service line materials of both the public and the private side, and that's the real kicker right there is on the private side, because typically that doesn't, we don't have anything to do with that. We expect that something that's been installed, our ordinances require certain materials need to be used, and they've been in place a long time, and that's what's, essentially makes it a little, a little easier for us. So these water systems of various states acknowledge associated materials in this distribution system. Typically, water mains and larger assets are more well-known in terms of materials, that is true. Water mains, we know what the water mains are down the roads, in the neighborhoods, we, we know what those are. Those are very easy to identify, and they're either ductile iron, we have some AC pipe, we have some cast iron, but most of the pipe in Independence Township is ductile iron pipe, that has been the standard for many years, and it will be as, as long as I'm here, I like to, I prefer ductile iron, it's very strong and robust. Service line material, service line material knowledge is mixed. Whenever we do a tap to a house, which is we connect a house to the water system, we write down what the material of the pipe is. Then we inspect the other side of the house, from the curb box into the house, and I have a drawing of where we need to inspect it, it'll explain, you know, my, what I'm talking about a little bit better. In here with the rule, I'm going to get to that, they do not, the state of Michigan does not consider records older than from 1989 to be as reliable, so you have to do this physical verification. That's, that's, that's a kicker right there. I'm not really happy about that, but we're not the only one in the boat. You know, there's many, everyone in the state of Michigan's in there. So a service line, this is just a definition of what a service line is on the private side and on the, and on the public side. And expectations of Eagle, is that by October 16th, this year, systems have created a line-by-line inventory consisting of the materials for every service line in their distribution system regardless of ownership. Every, so how do we do that? So we have to do this physical verification, and I want to lay it out here how we're going to do that. So we've complied with everything here, where that red arrow is at is where we're at right now. Conduct physical verification, physical verifications of service line materials, and we have to evaluate the field result verifications, conduct additional verifications if necessary, update and expand records and compile the giant report. This is where in the MAF, as you see, I have two vendors in here. This is, scope of this is way beyond our current staffing levels. We do not, we have to call the pros in. So that's why on our MAF, we have the engineering firm that's going to compile and extrapolate all this data according to Eagle's instructions on how to do this, to verify ones that we don't dig up, you know? They're going to accept a formula they come up to figure out, yeah, okay, well, we believe that one's plastic, okay. But that's some formula that they came up with. It's, it's available online if you really want to look at it, but there's a lot of data that needs to be compiled to do all this. Field verifications, we have to have contractor that we have with us that has a contract that we've been doing it. I've been up here many times talking about them as pipeline management, we do have a competitive contract with them through Oakland County, and the engineering firm that we're using is DLC Michigan, who is a competitive bid and authorized engineering firm through the, for the township. So I can go through all this on the minimum service line verifications, this is all in your board packet, is how they go about doing this and the methodology they want to do this. I have to be honest with you, you got to read it three or four times to understand it, but what they do is eventually they justify that everybody's going to do this, every public water supply is going to do this, and you're going to have to pay for it yourself. Is there grant money available? There is some. We looked into some grant money that's on there, it's, it's pennies compared to, to do anything, and I could tell you right now, the cities and communities in Michigan, we do have a lot of lead service lines, have to get this done, Detroit, Flint, Grand Rapids, you know, you think of the bigger cities, Independence Township, we're not getting a penny, we're not going to get nothing. So to do this, there is a three-point or a four-point verification process you have to do. We're doing a three-point. State allows us, so we're going to do the three-point. So, and then there's a method I've figured out, the lines of no materials. I want to get to, okay, this is, this is what I just mentioned. So on these footnotes right here, it says, "Recently," meaning referring to recently installed lines and records, "is a context of water supplies must define recent to include a time after which its records have been demonstrated to be reliable." So it's questioning the records that we currently have, are they reliable? "No records prior to 1989 may be considered recent for this purposes of the proportion of the verification process." That's it in a nutshell, right there. They don't trust anything you have that's from 1989 or older, which is kind of ridiculous in my mind, but again, I didn't make this law. So we have unknown lines, they consider those unknown lines. So we have a chart that the Eagle has provided with how many water services that you have, that is terrible slide, and I apologize for that, but we fall into the category of approximately 375 lines. I'm sorry, 364 I think it is on the chart here, 364. So this is telling us that we have to visually inspect 364, a minimum, 364 service lines.
By October.
By October 16th. So this is the kind of where, this is a good visualization, as you can see right here. So there's two, three points here, one, two, and three. Those are the points that must be physically inspected and verified. If you see in points one and two, that is the curb box, every home that's connected to the public water supply, as they shut off in their front yard, we have to excavate down four feet right to those two pipes where the shut-off valve is at, and physically look and take pictures of what the pipe material is on the public side at point one, and public, and the private side on point two. And then we'll have to fill the hole back in, it's going to be done by hydroexcavating, they take about an eight-inch pipe and they squirt water and they just, it makes a perfectly round hole. And then they can get down there, then they can verify it, take pictures, you have to do this. And then we have to go in the house and make an appointment with the homeowners, go in the house, make an appointment with them, and physically look at that, take pictures and identify that pipe material, put all this data together and get it reported to the state. That's why we have to call in help with this, we just, there's no way we'd have the staff to do this.
I'm volunteered, I think.
What?
There you go.
Yeah.
I'm volunteered to help.
I have my free time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be a task, no doubt about it. But those are the three points, there's a number four point in some of the communities, that's a gooseneck, we're not doing that, the law says we can do three or four-point physical, physical verification, we are doing a three-point. This kind of tells you what you have to do in the minimums, curb stop to building a minimum of 18 inches from the curb stop, a minimum. I mean, they, they actually have it down to how far back you have to go from each valve, and how far you have to go on the other side of the valve. And what is the word to evaluate? Do you have records for the sites that you verify? Do they match? Is there a pattern of the results? Did you find what you expected? This data is going to be compared to the data that we already have that they didn't trust, from 89 and older, and that's where, that's huge amounts of data that we, I can't, I don't have the staff to do, there's just, you know, we have 7,000 accounts, you got to go through 7,000 accounts, put all this data in, verify other ones. So this is just an example of the table that Eagle is looking for, some of the data, and this is where the engineering firm will come in handy. So beyond verification, we have to notify residents if lead is found in any service line, we have to electrically notify them, which we will. Then we have to finalize the rest of the inventory, which includes material assessments for the remainder of the service lines, not physically verified, all water mains, towers, pumps, anything that public drinking water goes through, that's part of the process that we have to do. What's next? There's more to come, okay? And this last slide, you can see it's Eagle's slide, it says, "We intend to release guidance in stages and are working on the next set of guidance documents now." That means more stuff is coming. And this inventory that we're doing must be updated every five years. We won't have to dig up, we just have, have to have our ordinances, so I have to review ordinances, make sure that certain pipe materials are not in there. We're in good shape, I was reviewing that, been reviewing that for a long time, but I'll have to get with you, probably attorneys, just to make sure that we are in compliance with state law when it comes to what they want to see. My guts telling me that they're going to go after copper lines next, then we're going to have lots of issues because we have a lot of copper lines put in. So that's where we're at on that. So I'm here, LCD, lead and copper rule reminders, you know, I highlighted that, if we find one, all lead service replacements are to be done at water system expense. And all of this is, there's no funding for any of this. We must notify the residents within thirty days. We also have to start putting in our yearly consumer confidence report, beginning October 16th of this year, which means next year, we have to put our results in there in our consumer confidence report, and any of the lines that we haven't figured out, which we, we will have, we have to notify that homeowner every year, we haven't found out what your service line is yet, we haven't found out what your service line is yet. It's, it's, it's quite a, it's quite a task. Lead and copper unit supervisor from Eagle who put those slides together. So what does that mean? So this means it's something that's very expensive that hasn't been fully budgeted for. I budgeted $150,000 in our water budget for this year as a placeholder, I had no idea how much this was going to be, I know it was, knew it was going to be expensive, it came back, so using the contractors and the engineering firms that we have that are under contract with us now, it is a cost of approximately total project cost of $420,750. I did budget 150 specifically for this job. So to make it more palable, and there is a budget amendment involved, I have postponed and canceled projects on my CIP for this year to pay for this. This is mandated by the state and EPA. I don't like coming to, for you to ask for budget amendments, I really don't. I'd rather shuffle stuff around, hey, you know, I budget for things and miss this one, so I'll, I'll have to kick a couple of projects down the road. But tonight I'm looking to get approval for DLC Michigan to be the engineering contractor and project manager for this, and for pipeline management, to be the field verification crews that will go out. If we do have board approval, we are going to notify all 375 residents by mail in a letter explaining exactly what they need to do and who they need to call to make an appointment so that interior verifications can begin. The outside and verifications will be done pretty quick, we're still involved with this, we have to go in stake and locate every one of those curb boxes that are out in front of the homes, we have to, that's part of our, what we're going to do, we have to be part of this. It's going to take up a lot of time, so we need to stay ahead of the contractors, because they will come in and they will just knock it out. That's why we have to have crews dedicated to do this and get the data and get it all done. So I know it's a mouthful and a whole lot to tell you, and I, you know, this is one of the things that I don't like coming to the board for, but this is mandated by EPA and the state, we have to get it done, and I don't know of any community in Michigan that's doing this themselves. They're just, they're just like, no way, there's, you know, I'm not aware of any, maybe there is, I can't say there's not, but I know around here, my colleagues that I've talked to, they've all, they did exactly what I'm, in front of you tonight to do for the program.
And this, this is mandated and...
State law, federal EPA law, it's in your board packet.
Yeah, no.
And I'm afraid there's just more rules, changes to come, but...
Yes. Ron Rice first. Versi Ritchie.
Yep, just a couple of questions. One, just to clarify for the public, this is only for the township municipal water system, it's not for individual wells.
Correct.
So we're only checking people that are on the township water system.
100%.
Is what we're checking. And then my second question is, the $420,750 they have budgeted, is that for every item that we need to check, every house that we need to check, or is it just the minimum number that you, you said you had to have done before the 16th?
So we, there, we, we did build in, according to the chart, with the amount of water services that we have, we were, we were supposed to do approximately 364. We added 10 more in case we can't get to them. I mean, there, there could be situations where, you know, we don't want to like blow up somebody's driveway because their curb box is right there, you know, jackhammer a whole dr, I mean, that one repair costs us seven, eight thousand dollars just to, for restoration, we don't want to do that. We'd rather move on, go next door, if there's a, a home there where the curb box is in the grass. So we did build in 10 more, essentially 10 more than really what we're, what we're supposed to do in case we have some that we just can't get in.
But the 420 is only for that partial number, it's not for every house?
It's not for every single one, it's for the 300 and...
The minimum that you need to meet, meet the... The minimum that you need to meet, meet the requirements.
That's correct, yep.
Carrie.
So the homes on your minimum, are you basically saying they're homes that were built prior to eighty-nine now?
No.
No?
No, and that's one of the slides right here, the state of Michigan had a, I guess it was an algorithm on how to randomly pick three hundred and seventy-five homes, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't do it, you know, DLZ Michigan did it for us, and they, they just, it's, it was a machine, you put your addresses in, I don't know how, I, you know, I'll be honest with you.
Just scared of someone.
Yeah, it was just a random. So when they get, we get all the data from that, and part of the other data it'll do to cover the other sixty-seven hundred units we have, is the data that we have, which DLZ will go into, and they'll say, okay, well, this whole neighborhood was built in, you know, nineteen eighty-two, for instance, and, oh, we got a couple of verifications here. You can assume that the rest of them is the same types of material, you know, a whole subdivision, they're going to use the same material, they're not going to use different stuff here and there. And there is a formula, and there is a way that that gets done as well, that's why everybody's not doing this now.
Treasure Brown.
This is, it's absurd.
I, I agree.
They got us checking apartments that were just built on Mann Road for lead pipes. I don't know who came up with this idea, but sometimes government is, does not do very well.
Yes, this is not a shiny...
Literally, they're building these apartments on Mann Road, they're brand new, I see Morgan Lake in here, a brand-new build subdivision by Clearview, and they've picked some of those to, to randomly do, it makes no sense. Those are not lead pipes, and that, we're going to do those and not check older neighborhoods in some cases. I, I don't know how they don't give you some flexibility with that.
I, I don't know either.
Four hundred and twenty grand, and we're checking places that were built this year for lead pipes.
That's correct. So it all goes into this algorithm, or this, this, this thing that University of Michigan came up with to...
I'm looking at the streets.
...extrapolate data to give you a prediction or analysis that will tell you what your other service lines are throughout the township.
I know it's not you.
Claire Newick.
I am, it's not happy about it.
Claire Newick.
Since we're making the site visits and ultimately paying for this, will we be utilizing GPS of the connections so that we have that? I mean, I know that's been something we've been working on slowly for a lot of years, we might as well get the most of our...
Absolutely.
Bang for our buck, so...
And the good thing, you know, like I said, I, I, I'm not, I'm not really opposed to service line verification, you know, it's a good thing to have this data, it really is, I mean, it's not intrusive, we just need to know, because, like I said, next time, I don't know, Sam, you're in the building trade, and those of you who, if you remember, maybe thirty years ago, there was a problem with plastic PVC pipe in houses, right? It was rotting, it was, I think it was CPVC or something like that. What was it?
Quest.
Quest, yeah, yeah, there you go, that's, that was it. The pipe just deteriorated after a while and bust in your walls, it was crummy, you know, it was a big mistake, and it cost billions of dollars across the country. When it comes to drinking water, you don't know how certain materials are going to act, you know, honestly, copper, I think, is one of the best pipe materials ever for drinking water. But we put chlorine in water, what does chlorine do to plastic, what does chlorine do to copper? We don't put a lot in there, but after a while, you know, is plastic leaking into the water, and are you drinking, and are you going to test for that? It's just an ongoing thing that they do, and we comply with it.
Thank you.
It is, it is very expensive, and Paul, I, I share your sentiment on that.
Thank you. Any questions online? Anyone would like to address the board about this item? Okay, any other motion?
I'm moved to accept the quote received from DLZ Michigan for professional engineering services to administrate the township's complete distribution system materials inventory as required by Eagle, for a do not exceed amount of eight... It's supposed to be of eighty thousand dollars, right? And accept the quote received by pipeline management through open county cooperative purchasing agreement for professional field verification services for the complete distribution system materials inventory as required by Eagle, for a do not exceed amount of three hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars, plus a ten percent contingency of thirty-eight thousand dollars, for a total project cost of four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the supervisor to sign both quotes on behalf of the township.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion two is approve the twenty twenty-four budget amendment number sixteen as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The next, we have a Treasure Brown, Trustee Sam Morocco, and a presentation for a resident, Joette Kuns. So Joette will make the presentation first, are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, Joette, please, come to the podium, state your name.
I don't know how to, do I just, I don't know.
Should be there.
Dave, can you help her?
I got it.
Can you plug in, okay?
Yes. Are you doing the milkweed?
Yeah.
Let me set that up.
Okay, would you?
Sorry about that.
Normally he does that.
Thanks for the kind words, Joette.
Appreciate it. So I know that you're set up on a powerful presentation here, and...
Yep, that's it.
And we'll start you from the beginning?
Yeah, that's it, yeah, yeah, okay.
There you go, just hit the space.
Okay, thank you, okay. Thank you. I, I'm here on behalf of the Residential Open Space Committee, but also the Clarkston Garden Club, and also the Blue Heron Land Conservancy, who supports this. And it's really to remove the milkweed from the noxious weed ordinance. The state has, this is the ordinance, you can have it, there's milkweed in one place there, you can read it in your, in your ordinance thing. This is milkweed, if you don't know what milkweed is, it is a native plant of Michigan, and I assume it was maybe in the noxious weeds because it, it, it expands with rhizomes and things like that, and you'll see it. You'll see it now on dirt roads, you'll see it in farm fields, if they don't use herbicide or they don't kill it. Michigan, House Bill four eight five seven, was signed into law on March twelfth, removing milkweed. And so we would just, their ordinance is the same as your ordinance, word for board, so we would like to see milkweed taken out of the Independence Township ordinance. Why? Basically, monarch butterflies can't reproduce without milkweed. Butterflies lay their eggs on the bottom side of milkweed plants, then the eggs become caterpillars, the caterpillars become pupus, and probably you learned this in fourth grade, and, and then the pupus open up into a monarch butterfly. Monarch butterflies are declining about fifty-nine percent, I understand, not all because of milkweed, but this is their only food source. This is just the life cycle, and probably was in your science book about fourth grade. But those caterpillars can only eat milkweed. We, and you can see, that's what it looks like on the, on the downside, and they're voracious eaters. The milkweed grows in agricultural fields, they don't, doesn't tolerate herbicides, it's at the edge of farm fields, but the farmers are using up, right up to the road these days to get more crops. Basically, we need, we need the insects that we have, who are the food for the birds, who are food for other animals, it's all part of that. So we need to have milkweed as their food source. What can people do? Bourdain sells swamp milkweed. There's a lot of us, have probably been, the ordinance officer ought to come and give us a little ticket, because we have it in our flower beds, we have, we bought it at Bourdain's, you know, it's, it's all over. But people who want to have a pollinator garden, because you want bees as well as butterflies to flourish in our community, you can purchase milkweed as well as care about the milkweed that's naturally grown. Basically, this is the last. Butterflies, first-generation butterflies that are born here in Michigan fly down to northern Mexico, and overwinter there, until about February, then they come back to the southern states, and they lay an egg, and have a caterpillar and a pupa, and that second generation comes back to Michigan. It's about a thirty-eight day cycle there. When we're doing open space, we need to leave buffers for the insects that we have, the birds that we have, that's an important thing from our committee, is to have some of these open spaces, buffers to areas, because we don't, we don't want to mess up our ecosystem here. There's a native plant sale, if you want to buy milkweed, by the land conservancy, I think it's June first, from ten to four, in Neiman's parking lot. But basically, we'd like milkweed out of your ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Joette, you have your right. Okay, Paul?
I'll just add in, I learned a little bit about the state's noxious weed ordinance, and the state had named milkweed as a noxious weed. In addition to that, they had other things that were noxious. They then indicated that local communities could name other things that they felt were noxious weed, so we could take what they had and add to it. And so the state took a really strong position on making this change, because not only did they remove milkweed from their list, after the section that indicates communities can add things to the list, they said in the law, milkweed cannot be a noxious weed. So they have positively identified it that we cannot have in our ordinance, even if we wanted to. So important to change it, and that's what we're doing.
Sam?
I'm full support, Residential Open Space Committee, this is a big deal, Blue Heron, big deal. I've been hearing about this for years and years, so it's, Joette, so I'm glad that it's now been brought forward, and that we can, you know, the state's agreed, and we can, you know, feed the butterflies.
Okay. Just one more real quick thing, I actually had another ordinance kind of cleanup thing, this is a fairly simple one, it was striking a word, so it's a pretty simple process, I had another one I was going to bring, we were kind of grouping them together to get a little bigger bang for the buck, but I ended up, happened to pull the other piece I was going to do, and that's why this one kind of came by itself, because we tried to group them together just to have a, get a few things done at the same time, so...
Okay. Claire Newick.
My comment would be, if we're going to make a change, that we have township legal look through the ordinance in its entirety, see if there's anything else that's outdated if we're going to make a change, in my opinion.
Okay, so we're going to...
Bring the entire ordinance current, I mean, maybe there isn't anything else, but...
Yeah, actually, I spoke with Joette before, and people, members of the Blue Heron, and then, yeah, I, I started a presentation before, I don't have any opposition on it, and I met with different people about that, and I think we should, we should be fine with that. Oh, Trustee Alamato.
I'm just, based on what Clerk Newick said, I don't know if that's necessary, because I believe Joette said that the way it's written mimics the way the state law's already written.
Word for word.
Word for word, so I don't think we need to waste legal's time on it, and just strike the word milkweed as following state law.
Okay.
Are you, are you okay with that? Okay.
Good.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve preparation of the first reading documents for consideration at a future board meeting, this will be a simple strike-through of the word milkweed. Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Joette.
Thank you.
Good job. Carrie.
Our next item is for approval of a second reading and adoption of the ordinance amendment for the ordinance code, section thirty-four through thirty-eight. This is relative to alcohol in our park. As the board's aware, the township's current code prohibits consumption of alcohol, liquor in the parks. In twenty twenty, the township board approved a resolution to designate Brady as exempt from enforcement of this section, so that alcohol consumption could be authorized at Brady Lodge for events approved by the township. Township legal is also in the process of applying for the liquor license on behalf of the township for use at Brady, so this is necessary, the second reading and adoption in order for us to have the ordinance change in place.
Okay.
I don't believe we had any, there were no changes requested at the first reading, so...
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's just as procedural at this point.
If there's, nobody have any questions, and any questions online, any questions? No, okay, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'm moved to approve the second reading and adoption of the amendment to the Independence Township Ordinance Code, section thirty-four through thirty-eight, alcoholic liquors prohibited, and direct the clerk to publish notice in the manner prescribed by law.
Support.
Okay, it's roll call.
Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newick, yes, motion Carrie.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Carrie, good job. Okay. Now, this is, we did RFP for signage, and we got, I got a proposal from a company that I presented to you guys, and it's for the design engineering of the signs that's going to be around the township. As you know, the first step was getting the, the logo, and this logo for the township which, which approved, now we need to move forward with the design engineering for, the company is going to design, look for the licenses and everything for, the locations and everything for the new signage for the logo, and, you know, as I stated before, like Orion Township, Waterford, Brandon, Oxford, everybody has a well, sign saying, thank you, welcome to, to the township, welcome to Orion Township, welcome to Waterford, I'm going to have a sign saying, thanks for visiting the township. We didn't have this for many years, and part of that is we didn't, for many years, we didn't have a logo, finally, we have a logo, I just asked the board to spend twenty thousand five hundred to have this company to design and do the engineering and everything for, and the permits and all that for the, for the signage. I mean, it's no installation or no that, they're going to help us also to, for, find the right vendor and the installation for the signage, so it doesn't include installation, just the design, engineering, permits and all that.
They're going to pay for the permits with this money?
Yes, including the value, yeah.
Seems odd to me...
Sounds odd.
That the permits are included with this, but that's, that seems very odd, so... I guess if I can.
Yeah, sure, I can, I mean, if, by the time nobody, oh, yeah.
I just want a clear understanding of what we're paying them for, because we, we already know what the logo is, we pretty much, unless they're going to design a new sign...
Yeah, they're going to design a new sign, yes, engineering and...
But like, design a new sign, what, these are just like the metal signs that you see when you come in, or are these going to be like a super fancy sign that you come in? You know, some of them, Orion Township's got some, a little more ornate of a sign, and Clarkston's got a little more ornate of a sign, I mean, we just paid a branding company to come up with the bell, so, I, you know, I, I don't know what, if there's, if we're, you know, I guess what the benefit, all the benefit of it is, I mean, we know where the signs are going to go, on the road right away, are they going to handle all the permitting with the county in order to do this?
Yes, I, that's part of it, to get the company when, with the RFP. Yes, Paul?
So typically, when you go out to bid to have signs put in, the sign company, it's all, it's all inclusive, so all the stuff that you acquired to put it in is part of the proposal to buy the signs. So I'm trying to figure out why we're separating it out, I mean, it is a sign company... So I'm trying to figure out why we're separating it out. I mean, it is a sign company. So why is there, why is there, we've already got the, our logo and design, we know what that is. Why do we need to pay someone twenty thousand dollars? Why aren't we just going out for bids to people to bring proposals for the signs themselves and include all this with it?
We, we can do that, certainly. I won't have any problem with that. That's what I was told when I met with Moran and Brian, they recommend me to, to do the first step, which is engineering, design and all that. And then when they come up with, with that, we have to get someone there to do the installation and, and signage. But that's, I asked the experts and that's what they recommend me. But I don't have any problem to do the, as a direction the board wanna take. I don't have any problem.
My neighbor was a sign guy, so I, these sign companies generally, it's, it's all inclusive. So, yeah, I just feel like we're gonna get the biggest bang for the buck knowing how, you know, what we're gonna spend on the signs and all the engineering should be included in the quote for the signs themselves. It just feels like we're spending some money here and still won't have any quotes for the actual signs, which I think we can roll it all together and, and have that done, I would think.
Okay. Let's table it and then I will work. I don't have a problem with that.
I think we should make a list of the things that Ron's got us.
Sure.
I was just gonna say, you know, I read through this a couple of times and, you know, under the deliverables, it doesn't say anything about permits or anything. Basically, what I get out of reading this whole thing is it's, it's gonna give you an outline to go get, you know, an outline to, to make a quote, to go out to bid. So you're paying twenty thousand dollars for somebody to, to make us up a, a, you know, a quote model to send out to sign people. You know, because the deliverables are the, you know, they're gonna have recommendations for, for a plan, like a signed style, and it's gonna give you an electronic copy of it. And then he's gonna give you at least three design concepts and an implementation plan. But it doesn't say anything about permits or any of that kind of stuff, so. So I mean, to me, it's, he's designing you like a, a style of a sign, at least three different styles to look at and then you can use that information to go out and get a quote from a sign company.
Right. They're gonna give us the specifications, fabrication, materials, colors, installation requirements, but no price to do any of the work.
It's, it's kind of like a, here's the, the type of sign that you're, you know, you should consider and here's the specifications to go out and get a quote.
Will ASI bid on the job? I assume they will. Do, will this sign company also bid on the signs?
No.
They won't?
No, we, we, we go.
No, I'm saying when we, when we go out for bid for signs, will these guys submit a proposal for the signs as well?
I don't know. What we did here is I, we contacted Orion Township and asked them how they did the process for the signage. And they told us that is the way how they start the process for what they have now currently. So, because we never have a signs for many, many, many years. I mean, we didn't have it at all. So I, I, we reached out to Orion to see how they doing to be able to implement something similar according to our reality. That's all I doing. But you guys got good questions. I don't have any problem to come up with something more comprehensive next time. But keep in mind, this is something that we don't have, we didn't have it at all. That's why I, since Orion already do recently, because Orion have the same issue with, like Orion, Orion confusion. And seeing we have so many logos and we addressed this before, I was trying to be more proactive and try to get something from Orion to save time and money. That's all it was. But I don't have a problem. You guys brought good points, so we can, I can bring it up next time. Okay?
Well, I, I, I mean, you're on the right path. It's just, it doesn't, it's, it's, you know, we're paying someone to give us an idea of a sign. With, with the internet, there's a million.
Sure.
Nobody's coming up with something new. I highly doubt. It's something that's out there.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of where do they get, cut and paste it from, you know?
These people has been working also when I look at, with Clarkston, so they're familiar with the area and all that. But listen, I'm fine. I mean, I, we're in the right idea. Everybody agree we need to serve us a nice sign. This is welcome to Independence Township, like we already supported the DDA. I just tried to, I was trying to be, just being proactive and save some money by reach out to Orion. That's all, how, how they did it. But you guys brought a good questions and no problem.
How many signs are they gonna design for us? Because we're gonna have, you know, it's not just one. You're gonna have...
They're not designing the signs.
They're not.
It says, it says there's gonna be three in the deliverable section, section six.
Three signage, design concepts and implementation plan.
Right. So when I, when he says design concepts, I take it that's multiple signs for each concept. You know, there might be a vertical design, it might be a horizontal design.
Because like, for instance, we're gonna have a bigger sign at Dixie Highway and seventy-five if we get the easement on that new property. That's totally different than what we're talking about. I think what this, what he's talking about is these are just the, maybe eighteen inch tall by three foot wide signs as you're coming, you know, "Thanks for visiting," or "Welcome to," you know, and they have different, nice frames. Some of them are nicer than others and all that. But there's gonna be different, I would, you know, maybe the, you know, it's gonna be bigger coming in off of seventy-five opposed to...
Different designs, different styles at different, different points. Like you said, depends on the entry point that you're looking at.
Wow.
Like when you come in off Maybe Road versus Dixie Highway or something.
I mean, somebody's gotta put it together. I get that. You know, someone's gotta put the package together.
That's what I'm saying. To me, that's what this is, is telling us that. But it, you know, the way this supervisor said it, it's like, it's like you're saying it includes more than what I read in here. And I guess that's, I'm questioning that, so.
And I'm just thinking that in my business, like if, if, it's kind of like you buy a kitchen and they design it for free because you're buying the kitchen. If we dealt with a sign company who's done it for many, you know, would they do the same thing as part of that? And then install it, fabricate it, sell it, give us the whole out the door thing? Because then they're in it from the ground, the ground level.
And the benefit of doing it that way is instead of having one company here create three design styles and then ask for quotes from some other sign companies who all have their own designers, it seems to make sense. We're gonna get a, a better opportunity to find what we love by having three or four or five separate sign companies come up with whatever that thought is. With quotes on what the signs, how much they cost and the whole package. Engineering, installation, all inclusive before we spend a dime. And then it's part of the package and we'll know where we're going at that point.
Right. And they'll probably break down the design, you know, part in their bids of what they're into. But it's a one-stop shop.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Happy to assist if I can.
Yeah, sure. Let's, let's meet tomorrow and talk about it.
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Thank you. All right, we're not taking action on that. And then lastly, we have you, Sam?
I just want, I have gotten some feedback from some residents on this, on the Clarkston News thing. I've talked to some other people about it. I just think with the election coming up and everything, I know that some of the clerk and the treasurer took his picture out. You, you had yours in. I've got some issues with the paper itself on how, I, I don't know how they're... Like when Paul brought it up at the last meeting, we were saying, you know, we're, two points, I think. We're wasting money printing articles that the newspaper should be printing for us. That's what a local newspaper does. We spent seven hundred thousand dollars on a placemat. I don't want to pay to put a letter in the paper. They should be doing that. That's what they've always done since we've lived here. Now, I mean, I took this piece of paper and this article is basically just reiterating a lot of the exact same stuff that was in the last one when we were doing the ribbon cutting. Now the ribbon's been cut and we're running the same article, basically, about Bay Court Park. And really, from my take, I don't get a whole lot of much out of this other than we're hiring and we put another picture of us all sitting there with the ribbon being cut. And that's about it, out of a whole entire page of the newspaper, almost. What I don't see is, I don't even see this article on our Facebook page, but we paid to put it in the newspaper. I think that we should be promoting, now we're gonna hire someone to do our Facebook pages again or whatever the name of the title is of that person that we lost, that she was very good, that started us off, I think. But there, we need to, if we're gonna spend money on the paper, I think we should promote our other avenues of getting information out, our website so people know more about what we're putting out daily. You know, go to our website, our Facebook page. Besides take out the election year and nobody should be doing self-promoting, I think that, I went through this paper, we're paying a lot of money for all the parks' events, which I don't necessarily have a thing for, but a lot of that should be coming out, should be either, I think, put in there by the newspaper because it's an event coming up, or it should come out of the Parks and Rec budget. They're, they're, they, they make money off these events, hopefully, if everything's going well and they should be able to market themselves instead of the taxpayer. Carrie has things that have to be put in there and I think that, you know, there's certain things you gotta do. I think that it would be, because of the election year, because of the paper, because of the way Clarkston News has become more of a penny saver than anything and partially because we're paying to put in the ads that they would have printed for free. I, I just, I don't see the need for it. I think that, I think that, that the three of you should use your best judgment to buy space in the paper, to put stuff in there that's relevant and pertinent to the residents on a need-to-know basis because we've had the same talk about filler and trying to fill the pages and put it in there. And I just, I don't see the value in it anymore. And I just, we had talked about not putting pictures in it. That still is happening. And every, every bit of print should be used for something that's actually informative and, and necessary for the residents to, to read. And I don't think, I think this got away from that point a little bit, you know, is my opinion.
Okay.
Ron?
And just to put my two cents in too, I guess every time I've chimed up about the Clarkston News is that, that we need to concentrate on making sure the content is applicable for, for the reader and not have, I guess this is where we're, I was complaining at, there's too many pictures of, of people and not enough content. And the content is, I guess, if, if there's proper content in there for each department, then it makes sense. But if, if we're not gonna concentrate on having good content, then it is, to me, not a good use of taxpayer money.
Okay, thank you, Ron. All right. We are in the process to hire a new PR person. We already, our new HR is doing a good, very good job and we very soon gonna have someone and that's gonna be in charge in, in the paper because right now, we, actually Jennifer has helped me out to be able to put together the paper. And also, we have budget to have four pages, but many times we reduce two pages or three pages sometimes. We have been saving money during the year. But very soon, we're gonna have again, like Sam mentioned, we used to have a good PR. We're gonna have another very good PR as well that's gonna help us with the paper. But thank you for your concern. Okay? Anyone else?
I guess I would like to make a motion that we just stop doing it and we put ads in the paper that are necessary for right now.
For right now. In the paper.
Second?
In the paper?
I guess just comment on that. I guess, to me, part of, part of, when we started doing the Clarkston News articles, the Clarkston News didn't go to every home. So part of the money we were paying was, was the guarantee that they would send it to every home. It goes to every home now, so. So like, I, I guess what I'm getting at is the point you were making about, they should be making some of these items that we're posting in our Township Times as, it should just be normal articles that the paper would print anyway. And evidently, you know, the, their, their model has changed. You know, why they're sending it to everybody's home because they're, you know, it's, it's more advertising. You call it the penny stretcher or whatever, but there is, you know, there is definitely a model change on, on the news since the time we started doing the Township Times, so.
The owners changed, you know, so it's not a hometown.
You know, they're definitely more advertising oriented now versus story oriented, I think, so.
I did talk to some people about it and I've heard people that aren't getting it, which was concerning. I talked to Carrie about it too. We had tried to find out the amount of people that, because my concern is that, I've talked to people that live in apartments or that live in mobile home parks and they're not getting it every week like we are. And I, I mean, I'm not gonna say that that's a deliberate thing, that the marketing paper's not going to lower income addresses because we have no way of proving it. So I don't know that, that, I don't, I can't confirm it goes to every single house in the township, is all I'm saying.
I guess I, when I say it goes to every house in the township, that was, I took that from the paper. The paper says they deliver it to, to every address and not, not any factual from the township itself. The township's not guaranteed now, so.
Sorry.
I'm done now. Go ahead.
Sure. I have to also admit that I have been receiving a lot of emails from concerned citizens because of the paper. Because the most valued thing right there is my contact information. Like for instance, someone that, that have a problem with the weather over the weekend was able to contact me because of my contact information right there, email, phone number. And I was able to help over the weekends. My job is not just four days a week. My job is twenty-four seven. I helping people even Saturdays and Sundays. I have to make the phone call and thanks to Dave McKee that he answered my phone call too and is able to help people because of the information right there. And quite frankly, I understand it's a political season. I know it's a personal vendetta against Clarkston News because Clarkston News has been not posting some of the half-truths or lies sometimes that goes there and, and because Clarkston News new owner wants facts. If we're not bringing facts there, they won't bring any lies to the editor. And attacking between board members is something that Clarkston News won't tolerate. You see, the new mem, the new owner wants facts and not half-truths. And before they posting something, when somebody puts one, write a liar to the editor, they will call a director here and ask, "What about this? Somebody's saying this." And the director will bring the facts, documents, things, "Oh, okay, they compared and this, no." And I think this is more a vendetta against Clarkston News than more than actually that, the concern. Because quite frankly, honestly, yeah, sure, I don't need to put my picture if there's a problem, but I think it's about helping our people. And this happened for many, for several years. Even somebody came to the podium the other day and says, "Hey, the former, the former supervisor, former clerk, and they used to be put their picture during the, the election season and all that." That's not a problem. The, the rationality of that was to help our residents. And I have been helping residents over the weekends and all that. So this is more to me a vendetta than, than more than actually a problem. It's more helping people. Clerk Newick have communicated in people during this time that the election's gonna be different than before. She have been providing a good information. It's more a positive thing than negative. It's negative is my picture. Oh, the picture is again, the picture, I keep hearing about the picture, picture. I like my picture, quite frankly. I, I don't have a problem. I think it's a, this is a more personal vendetta because I see a trustee commenting, "Clarkston News is not reporting facts." I don't, I don't think it's not true. Clarkston News better find facts. They wanna make sure that the people hear the truth. And that's all I gonna add tonight before you guys make a decision. Yes, Trustee Alamathu?
I don't think it had anything to do with you personally. I think it's the amount of money being spent on four pages that we can't fill. Four pages should not be on the contract to be filled up with photos because we don't have enough to talk about. If you think you can say what you need to say in one page, we should only be paying for one page. That's all we're saying.
Okay, I agree with that.
I think four pages every week is overkill. It's too much money. It's, there's so much stuff he's saying you can put online now. If someone needs your number, you know, post it on the doors here. People can see your number on our website, all that. So there's just a lot of stuff, I think, that's filler that we're paying for.
And I agree with that. I agree with that. I think should be at least, I think more efficient with two pages because the misinformation they, Clerk Newick during the election is gonna communicate and for Paul and I, I don't have a problem half and half. So two pages, I think, will be, instead of four, two pages should be okay. But this will, will be fine. Because sometimes I, I, I agree. I mean, I think it's more for Carrie than anyone else, I think, at this point.
I think you're missing the point though. The whole point is, is having good content. And you, you've multiple times for the supervisor's office, you've put in repeat information. I think that's what Sam was trying to get at. It's like, the, the week before, you had a thing about the, the new play escape at the park. And the next week, oh, here's another picture and more information about the same day, same thing you talked about on the previous thing. So it's like, if you don't have new content that's relative to, to the residents, don't put any article in. Like save that time, save that paper. I guess the other step I originally raised my hand for was that in... in, uh, all of the contact information on, online, the, uh, like when you look up the trustees, my phone number and email was always right, listed right there. Now they have this thing, you know, contact me. But you click on it, it doesn't do anything. So that's where we've had residents multiple times say, hey, I, I tried to get ahold of you, but it, you know, it doesn't work. So the website, just, it should just have the, uh, email and phone numbers under there. At least I want it on my, on my picture anyways.
Paul? Just relative to that, that, I'll, that's easy to fix. The reason they don't just have it there is because they got robots that go out and capture email addresses. You want someone to have to click on it to get the email address. If it's not working, we fix it. It can be fixed very quickly.
It hasn't worked in a long time.
My, cause my, mine works when they do that. So David Canton can have that fixed tomorrow. Uh, relative to what we're talking about, the need for individual departments to communicate with the public, specifically the clerk's office. Just there's the, well, she can have money put into her budget that the board approves to communicate about elections. And she can put the ads in whenever she sees fit. Right now, she's somewhat, um, uh, stopped by the fact that that paper comes out in a specific deadline, which might not best fit her needs. Same thing's true for the parks. Letting it be à la carte allows the departments to have that article hit the week they want it to. Because our Township Times comes out at once a month at the same spot. And so I think we're gonna get bit, bigger bang for our buck by departments be able to place what they want at the right time, including elections.
Just think it would be interesting, I'm sorry, uh, but to ask them how they'll prioritize, you know, what we put in as well. Now we have a dedicated space because of the Township Times. But now that we don't have, if we don't have, we move to that and any of us wanna put something in, is that ad gonna be back in the classified section? Is that gonna be, uh, is it gonna be kicked out because it's not a high priority because they've already full for that, that week? You know, I, I can't answer that. But I, some of those things are coming to mind as, as we think. I mean, now we, I know I have a protected spot when I do wanna put something. And I don't put something, you know, every month. It, it, it tends to be cyclic and it tends to be.
They'll expand the size of the paper. They, they don't limit themselves by saying there's only so many pages. They've ne, they're never gonna turn down an ad. It'll be in there and it won't be all the way to the back. It'll be somewhere in there.
And we're still a customer.
Yeah, we're still a customer.
Right now, we're just spending money for everybody to hype, hype up stuff to make everybody look good. That's not what, that's not what the money's for. My for factual, not everyone.
Can I call the question?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yeah, you can.
I'm calling the question.
Does anybody look at the contract though?
No.
We have flexibility.
Okay.
We looked at the contract though.
You had it changed.
What?
You had it changed. We only put in stuff if we wanna put it down. We had a price, right?
No, you wanna make sure, it's true, the contract. We don't wanna, you know, we have a, I don't know.
I understand that.
Yeah, the contract, I wanna.
Who reviews? Yeah, I would, I would just make the motion that you're willing to stop it consistent with contract terms.
Right. Uh, I just wanna say one more thing. This is nothing that was implemented by my administration. That was implemented before I came here. Number one. Number two, this is, to me, is more helping the people know. I, if the board believe they were saving money and taxpayers or that, I don't have a problem with that. I never have intention to misuse taxpayer money or, or nothing like that. Although I think there's more for what I see on Facebook and criticism is more a vendetta against Clarkston News. I hope it's not. Cause shouldn't be that way. That's all I'm gonna say. But I'm gonna support, I can, can I finish, please?
Sure.
I, I do believe, I always support saving money and all that. I hope this is, I hope Carrie, uh, Clark Newby have the time and still can put the ads, giving information about the election because it's important for taxpayers. That's all. Yes, uh, Michelle Brown?
I, I have a bit of a problem with you accusing other board members for having a vendetta against some, someone based on how we'll vote. I have no vendetta against the Clarkston News. I've lived here fifty-plus years. That paper's been around in one format or another forever. The township's still doing business with it. The question has arisen about how we're spending taxpayer dollars. And I, I, I res, I, I really don't appreciate you indicating that we have personal vendettas against the Clarkston News. That's ridiculous. It's not true.
Paul, last time you got called out for the same argument before by a citizen, had, and brought, brought facts here in front, that I don't wanna bring right now. And there's comments on Facebook, then I can show it to you tomorrow about attacks about Clarkston News from a board member right here. And I have, not from you. I says, you says a board member. I don't wanna bring names. I know from you. I never says your name. That's all I say. We're good. All right, go ahead.
My motion is to cancel the Township Times and put in à la carte things that are relevant and necessary, subject to the contracts, things until further notice.
Second.
We have one person online that, uh, has a hand up.
Oh, okay, sure. Somebody would like to comment.
It's that same guy.
It is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Uh, good. David Thompson, five four five one L. Um, yeah, just it, I have a concern. And that is that it kinda sounds like a lot of the things that you guys are putting into the newspaper are things that, uh, it's been said before, but should be in the paper anyway. There are some journalistic responsibilities. But one thing I have not heard is, um, how, whatever you do tonight, it may be worth considering, especially if there's a question of whether the paper is actually getting to every household. I don't know if anyone's actually looked at what it would cost to do a mailing, like a low-cost informational mailing, considering the amount of money that's apparently being spent on the paper. That might be an option that could actually allow you to get the important information, including, you know, contact information for public officials out consistently to everyone who needs to, uh, to actually receive it. So it's just a thought for the future if that is a serious concern.
Okay, no, thank you. That's a good, uh, good idea, actually. It's a good idea. Okay. All right. Oh, yes, please, come from, state your name and address, please.
Linda Bazong, seven nine two five Foster Road, um, Clarkston, Michigan. I love seeing you guys' faces on the, on the paper. I look forward to it every week. Carrie's got a great picture. I love your picture. And Paul's even got a fabulous picture in there as well. But, um, I do agree that, you know, we have to have important content. But I think it's something that the employee, that the residents have gotten used to seeing. But I know that some townships or cities have newsletters, um, that they send out, you know, monthly or whatever. But I think getting information to the taxpayer is really important to the people in the community, whether it's the Clarkston News or you develop, you know, even a one-page newsletter that you send out, you know, once a month. But I think that it's important. And we do have a lot of seniors in our community. I mean, you mentioned the website. I think that's great too. I mean, I look at the website, but there's also a lot of seniors that aren't computer literate and would not look at the website. So they would look at the newspaper or maybe if they got a newsletter in, in the mail. But they're not gonna go to the website to see what's going on. So maybe coming together as a board and finding a way how we communicate information to the citizens if we're not gonna do it through the newspaper, which is a form that the citizens actually look forward to.
Yes.
Just as one final comment, I still will continue to push to have our information in the newspaper in whatever avenue that we do. I think I had said it in some prior meetings that I do think, uh, as Ms. Bazong said, that I used to think it was only targeting maybe more of our senior citizens that don't get online. I have family that do look at that, that aren't online. But I actually heard last night from a younger person who said, that's not necessarily the case. Because she said she's in an era where she's got kids in school and they, the paper often puts things with sports pictures and things like that. So she said, I actually look at the paper as well and I never thought in that realm. I thought maybe I, they were more of the Facebook target kinda thing, social media and not the newspaper. But I heard differently. So I will always, I think, as far as I, as I know now, I will still advocate for some kind of an avenue through the newspaper to reach the people that only do and enjoy reading a newspaper. There's some people who, even like with books, there's people that don't like to, to do an ebook. They like to physically hold a book and read a book. And there's people that like that with the newspaper and appreciate that. So whatever avenue we decide, that's fine. And if I need to do that all on my own and, and start budgeting differently for years to come, cause I don't budget that way now, uh, outside of my required publications by law, I will do that because I do think it's an important, uh, avenue for our residents.
I agree.
Okay. So they have a question on the table.
So you're saying that you would like maybe to allow one?
I, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the question. I'm calling the question.
So there's a motion in a second. So it's either roll call or are you doing?
Okay. Request a roll call, please.
I'll clarify the motion that we're canceling the Township Times. But the, the clerk and township officials that have pertinent information that need to be printed certainly have the right.
Departments.
Departments to put it in there, not just self-promotional fluff to fill the paper. It's gotta be something that makes sense.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Uh, trustee Morocco.
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. And Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Okay. Communications and report. Oakland County Sheriff's Office activity, April twenty twenty-four. Report fiscal twenty twenty-three, actual budget comments. Communication, State of Michigan, new wholesale license. Residential opening space of accessory community, March twenty twenty-four. And residential opening space of accessory community, April twenty twenty-four. Board member, come. Oh, okay. Motion to adjourn?
I have a quick one.
Oh, sure.
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Memorial Day and not to forget what the day is about. And for all the people who died in service to our country, we thank you.
There you go.
Okay.
Now I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay. Those in favor?
All right.
Your pulse.